Grotton Town Council Regular Meeting, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, the Mayor. Councillors present, Mayor Grantowski, Councillor Bordelon, Councillor Baumgartner, Councillor Franco, Councillor Heed, Councillor Melendez, Councillor Parker, and those absent are Councillors Zepiri and Aubrey. And Councillor Aubrey may make arrangements to be coming in late.
Yes, she is welcome.
Note the time, she arrives.
Thank you very much. All right, so we are on to salute to the flag, and we have Mr. James Streeter with us this evening. Sir, would you please do us the honor of leading the pledge? Mr. Streeter? If you can hear me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, very nicely done. All right, recognitions, awards, and memorials. Now, this is 2021-603, and this is the Fourth of July Parade Awards. Normally, in a normal year, we can be at the Town Council chambers, and the recipients of the awards would be in person. But unfortunately, this year, we cannot do that. So I would be honored just to read the list of awardees. So the council is recognizing the 2021 Fourth of July Parade Award winners. The most patriotic, appropriately enough, goes to the United States Navy Submarine School. Best costumes, Extraordinary Arts LLC. Best music, Stars in Stripes Blues Band. Best youth participation is the Grotton Mystic Falcons Youth Football League. And the judge's choice was the Prince Hall Shriners. So thank you all very much for participating in the parade, and congratulations on your awards. All right, I don't believe we have any public hearings this evening. So we are on to receipt of citizens' petitions. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, you should have signed up prior to the meeting. When you are recognized, please clearly state your name and address for the record. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Grotton. Town councillors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the response to citizens' petition portion of the meeting. All right, very good. So we are going to get started, and we will go in the order in which I have... Do that here. Okay, so very first person we have on the list is Ann Troyano, Ms. Troyano. I apologize if I'm pronouncing it incorrectly. You have the floor. Ms. Troyano? Can everybody else hear me? Or is something wrong?
Yes, we can hear you, Mayor.
There it is.
Okay. Hi. Welcome to your pub. You have the floor, ma'am.
Um, you can hear my dog. He's a small dog. He's a Westie. There are many times throughout the years in town, and I'm in Mystic, that he's been approached by... Set her loose.
Ms. Troyano? Your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Anna Troyano, 148 High Street, Mystic, Connecticut.
Ms. Troyano, you can continue with your petition. I think she was letting the dog out. At least, that's what it sounded like.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay, go ahead.
Um, my dog's been approached by loose dogs a few times, some that have come up to us grabbing at him. He's been bitten on the neck. Things like that concern me. I've found dogs and taken them in that are wandering. That's why it concerns me about that we don't have a leash law in Grotton and Mystic. I think it's for safety for the dogs and people, and I just think it makes sense. Also, there's a clause, I guess, in the law now where it says that if the dog is under the owner's control, that they can go off-leash. And I don't think that should be in there because that's really up to interpretation. I know someone that walks their dog loose downtown all the time, every day. He's actually a neighbor. And it's very dangerous for the dog. And it just sets a precedent, like anyone can do that. I don't think it's a good thing to do. I think it's an easy fix. And also, dogs defecating on people's lungs, things like that. Just, you know, mainly just issues with that that I think a lot of towns already have in place, which would be helpful to have in place here. I was surprised it wasn't in place at all. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Before I go to the next speaker, there's someone here with just a first name Jamie. Could you please identify your last name for us? The person who has their name listed is just Jamie. Could you give us your last name, please?
Mayor, I'm gonna have to promote that person to panelists because they're on an older version of Zoom. So give me a moment.
Oh, okay. Mr. Streeter, you will be up next as soon as we identify the other speaker. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, this is Jamie Lee.
Jamie Lee. I don't have you on the list. Ms., Madam Clerk, do you have Jamie Lee on the list?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
That doesn't mean that she can't speak because I know she's a trusted person.
So we will, we have the other guests who are the other citizens who signed up prior that we will have their turns first. Thank you. All right, so we are on to Mr. Streeter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is James Streeter. I live at 64 Pleasant Street in Grotton. I am the appointed historian for the town of Grotton and have previously served for eight years on the Town Council and two years of those as mayor. I'm speaking to you tonight relative to a matter involving Grotton's Veterans Memorial Park, located between the Grotton Public Library and Senior Center. I have provided council members with several photographs to help orient with the park situation. By way of history, the idea of establishing Grotton's Veteran Memorial Park to recognize Grotton veterans of World War I, World War II, the Korean War, and Vietnam War began in December of 1981 when the council appointed an ad hoc committee to study and provide recommendations for suitable memorials. By June of that year, the council accepted and approved the committee's recommendation to place the memorial at its present's location and to install three engraved eight-foot-by-four-foot granite panels. The primary panel would be engraved with a statement indicating that, quote, "Citizens of Grotton have not forgotten the courage, valor, and sacrifices of their veterans of all wars," unquote. The second panel would be engraved with the words "World War I" and "World War II", and the third panel would be engraved with the words "Korea and Vietnam". The dedication to the park was held in May of 1984. In November 1997, a new panel was installed at the park. Called the 20th Century Memorial, it displayed the engraved names of 67 Grotton residents who lost their lives in World War I, World War II, Korea, and Vietnam. In mid-2011, the council established another ad hoc committee to upgrade and improve the memorial park by adding another panel at the park to recognize the veterans returning from Persian Gulf, Iraq, and Afghanistan conflicts, and for making recommendations for other upgrades and improvements to the park. Installation of the new panel, as well as other improvements, including Memorial Block Plaza and five flagpoles to display flags for each branch of services, were completed in November of 2014. Incidentally, funds for the improvements were raised by members of the ad hoc committee. Recently, I authored two articles for the Grotton Times newspaper relating to a Vietnam tribute display at the Grotton Public Library, which was organized by a volunteer at the library from Old Mystic, whose stepson had been killed in Vietnam. While conducting research on these articles, it was discovered that this Gold Star Mother's stepson's name, as well as possibly at least one other Grotton soldier who had been killed in Vietnam, were not engraved on the 20th Century Panel. I might add at this point that it appears that there is not sufficient room on the present panel to engrave more than one additional name on the 20th Century Panel. I'm here tonight to ask the council to approve establishing another ad hoc committee for the purpose of conducting research to determine if there are other names that have been omitted from our 20th Century Panel and to report back to the council with its findings and possible recommendations to correct any omissions of recognition. I have spoken to members of the previous ad hoc committee, including Councillor Aubrey, as well as one other interested Vietnam veteran, and all have agreed to serve on the committee. All are citizens of Grotton. If so desired, and if appointment of the ad hoc committee receives your approval, I would be happy to serve as chairman. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to your response.
Thank you, Mr. Streeter. Mr. Streeter, can you stay around if you have time for response to citizens' petitions? At White, I might ask you a couple of questions.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted Madam Clerk to note that Councillor Zepiri has joined us at 6:45. So we are at eight councillors right now.
Very much.
Thank you. We are on to Diana Fanof. I saw her here.
Oh, I'm on muteing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So many names on the screen. If you could just do your name and address.
Yes, I will, thank you. It's Diana Fanof, Bank Street. I wasn't sure how much I would be able to speak tonight, and I know there were two names that you called off, Christine and Susan, who were not able to make the meeting tonight. And that's why we didn't know if I could be put on the... I have, I can state my concerns, but how you get on the agenda if you want to have other people expressing their views that can't make it tonight? Is that possible, or should I just go ahead?
You should go ahead and make your statement, and then, let me pause this for a second. And then, you're always welcome to submit written comments, but right now is your time to speak.
Okay, thank you. I request that my concerns be twofold. One is the late-hour noise in downtown Mystic, and that is the one that others were hoping to join and speak as well. The other item is the parking and traffic flow specific to Bank Street. And there is concern about the holistic well-being of the residents of the Mystic-Grotton downtown area. And we would like to know what the Grotton Town Council can do about these concerns. So I will present them. The late-hour noise, it goes on past 11 o'clock. It can, one weekend night, I think it was almost 2 o'clock in the morning that I heard the noise. And the other night, over the Labor Day weekend, I had my back windows closed, which would be back to the downtown area, had my front windows open. I could still hear the noise coming in the front window. I know that the town of Stonington does have a noise ordinance, and so I'm wondering what can be done for the, you know, for the residents here in Mystic. That's my first concern. I can proceed on to the second, and that is the parking and traffic flow on Bank Street. This issue was addressed several years ago, and there were no parking signs put up in areas in the street that, the curbs that were marked yellow. However, that isn't being upheld. The street is narrow with limited visibility of oncoming traffic, especially when you're coming up Bank Street heading from West Main up to Academy Point, or Academy Lane. There's poor visibility and backing out of some of the driveways. Cars are generally always parked in the no-parking zone, especially Lower Bank. Cars will cross the flow of traffic and park on the wrong side of the street. On my side of the street, you should be heading north, and sometimes there are cars heading in the south direction. Cars can hold up traffic due to the two-way traffic on the narrow streets when they're making U-turns. And there's limited visibility. Exiting Bank Street onto West Main Street, one day, I was downtown approaching Bank Street, and there was a car from out of state, and she had to really apply the brakes because sometimes you cannot see exiting Bank Street because of the vehicles that are parked in front of Mystic Pizza. So that was a concern. Also, I witnessed this as well. An emergency vehicle, it was a fire truck, was going to make a right-hand turn up... Oh, I think they were coming from Hoxsey. Was going to make a turn up Bank Street, and there was a car that was at the stop sign. The fire truck had to wait until this car backed up and was able to allow the fire truck to come through. I'm speaking, I'm a registered nurse, retired but still registered with the state of Connecticut. So when I see the emergency vehicles, I get very concerned about what's happening up there. And there appears just to be an absence of police presence to patrol Bank Street and enforce the no-parking signage, especially on Lower Bank Street. Also, there's a no-parking sign that is in front of six Bank Street, which is right next to their stone wall. It's not even on the curb line where all of the other signs are on the street. So I simply request that Grotton's elected officials review these concerns to resolve and, you know, these stated issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right, let's see. Next, we have Beth Tillman.
Good evening, councillors and mayor. I am Beth Tillman, 925 River Road in this lovely town of Grotton. I note as we are beginning to position ourselves in an adversarial conflict with the preferred developer for the Mystic Oral School property, that we are going to be unfortunately learning a very expensive lesson in how not to write development agreements and how not to issue RFPs and how not to choose a preferred developer. We've had too much obfuscated in this process or clouded in secrecy. I know that Mr. Burt has indicated that something is in the works to attempt to clear up the process by which these RFPs and contracts and development agreements are drawn. And I would like this to happen sooner rather than later. We need to have a format for future RFPs with established transparent procedures. I would hope that everything will be in the public eye, that there will be ample time for public comments and for public input prior to any acceptance by the Town Council. It is my great hope that this will be accomplished in a timely fashion. I must admit, I am also a little concerned because of all of the problems that the public has seen in the activities of our town manager, that he was awarded a year extension with a council that will be changing a lot in November. I think this was something that was sprung on everyone, done in a meeting where there was absolutely no public comment and no prior notice of saying. I'm also wondering if the Town Council has allowed the individual who is going to be undergoing disciplinary action to have their right to it as a public hearing rather than an executive session? That is one of the things that is allowed under the rules for dealing with employment issues. I'm also a little concerned about the fact that the executive session for the Raspeler situation is not defined in any acceptable way to give anyone any indication as to what it is you are going to be talking about. This concerns me greatly. Too much, as I indicated, has been non-transparent, and that just, quite frankly, needs to stop. It is not to the benefit of the town. It is not to the benefit of the taxpayers. And quite frankly, it is not to the benefit of the Town Council. It leaves way too much room for misunderstanding. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Good evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Roseanne Katsowski. I believe Roseanne, our representative Katsowski is here. You have the floor?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Roseanne Katsowski, 24 Ann Avenue, RTM District 5. Tonight, first, I would like to correct the record. The Town Council requests for discussion or action for this meeting must be corrected to eliminate a false statement. Currently, the request for discussion or action states, quote, "Raspeler Homes was provided preferred developer status in 2018 for this project after completion of a thorough RFP and vetting process by state and local participants." This is a false statement. It should read, "Raspeler Homes was provided preferred developer status in 2018 for this project with no vetting process by state and local participants." It's important for the public to understand the facts regarding the Mystic Oral School development mega-disaster. The town putting out false statements and rewriting the history of the project adds to the total lack of credibility that the Town Council, Town Attorney, and Town staff have regarding this project. After another FOI request, the August 17, 2021, letter from Raspeler's attorney was released. It is clear that the town needs to terminate its agreement with Raspeler. But the same Town staff, Town Attorney, and Town Council that got us into this mess in the first place have no business negotiating the town's way out of it. Instead of taking any responsibility for this disaster they caused, they are still withholding documents, keeping in place the contraband, which has been the town's standard operating procedure for the Mystic Oral School mega-development disaster for years. They won't admit they screwed up. As more withheld documents are coming out, it turns out that the selection committee was corrupt, incompetent, and never held to accountability. Actually, there are two different FOI responses to the FOI request for selection committee information. Now we understand that there was a third secret session. How is that possible? If the Town Council, Town staff, and Town Attorney are going to make decisions, they must take responsibility when things go wrong. Town councillor's speeches last month stating, quote, "We have to trust Town staff not only fell flat, but also show a total disconnect from the reality of the Mystic Oral School mega-development disaster." Has any Town Has any town staff, town councillors, or the town attorney apologized? How many town staff have been fired or resigned? Has the town attorney been fired or resigned? Has anyone been disciplined or punished? The public deserves accountability from the town of Groton when we all know mistakes were made. Why not admit what the rest of us are seeing? It is a mistake not to hold the people accountable that got the town of Groton into this mess. The public would be more forgiving. Please don't tell us what we are seeing with our own eyes is not a disaster. In the August seventeen, twenty-twenty-one letter from Raspeler's attorney, there are statements that completely contradict town staff, town attorney, and town council statements as recent as May twenty-twenty-one. The biggest lie of all that we were told repeatedly was that, quote, "Nothing's happened yet." While at the same time, town staff, town attorney, and town coun, council knew there were at least four signed agreements. It was a bold-faced lie. The August seventeen, twenty-twenty-one letter paints a clear picture of a very cozy relationship with town staff and Raspeler. There were also discussions regarding eminent domain regarding the Mystic Oral School Road. Those discussions or documents are currently withheld from the public. All the while, we were told, "Nothing's happened yet." Regarding TIF, it looks like there were documents provided to the town from a company called Munichap. Quote, "Munichap has been working with the town and its consulting firm over a year." Quote, "Munichap, on behalf of Raspeler, did in fact provide extensive and detailed materials to the town's consultants." Where are those detailed documents? Remember, the whole time, the public was told, "Nothing's happened." It's time for the people that got us into this mess to be held accountable and have consequences. None of them should be involved in the town's effort to negotiate our way out of the Raspeler deal. The town council should not be meeting in secret executive session tonight to discuss the dispute resolution process as stated in the request for council discussion. According to the FOI Commission, Section on Executive Session, quote, "By a vote of two-thirds of the members present and voting, an agency may close certain portions of its meetings. Please end the cloak of secrecy regarding the Mystic Oral School mega development disaster and vote for transparency and do not vote to go into executive session tonight." Thank you.
Next up, we have, thank you, Representative Katsowski, I'm sorry, I was muted. Um, next up, we have Mr. McCauser.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Edward McCauser. I live at forty-eight West Aldican Avenue in Groton. And uh, first, I'd like to thank the uh, manager and the council for releasing the letter of August seventeenth from the attorney for uh, Raspeler Homes. Um, and I'd like to just comment on that. First of all, uh, I've read the letter and I've read the development agreement over and over. And this letter, it, you know, the, it's a response to a notice of default. The letter and, and it's, you know, the points it's making do not indicate, you know, that the default has been cured. Um, the default still exists. There are a number of things that the uh, attorney for Mr., for Raspeler Homes points out, and I'm not going to go over those. But the major point, uh, and this was made in the first letter from Raspeler Homes, seemingly is that uh, Raspeler Homes is saying the town of Groton is obliged to seek is a text amendment to the zoning uh, under the agreement. Although there is a, a let, a sentence in the uh, uh, development agreement that seems to indicate that it is in context, uh, it is clearly not the obligation of the town. I'd like to just read from the letter from Raspeler Homes to illustrate this misconception. I don't want our, our, you know, our government to be on this misconception. He says, the attorney says, "At this point, Raspeler has not been able to provide an expanded list of known government approvals beyond those notified in the agreement. Because until the zoning text amendment is approved, Raspeler does not know what type of use will be approved for the site, nor is it, nor does it know the type, dimensions, location, or dimensions of any buildings to be constructed at the site." And then again, it says, "These elements cannot be fully addressed until the town has obtained a text amendment creating a floating zone relating to the site, which includes dimensional area and use regulations." As you're fully aware, only then will Raspeler be able to prepare a master plan. I want to point out in the development agreement, in Section five-point-oh-one, Government Approvals, on page eight, in the, in accordance with the development plan, "Developer at its sole cost and expense and with reasonable diligence shall prepare detailed applications, plans, and appropriate supporting materials and apply for all government approvals that are required from any governmental authority in order to construct the project in accordance with this agreement and the development plan." Uh, and just to make clear that this is the developer's obligation, uh, governmental approvals means all, this is in the definition section, page three, Section P. Government approvals means all final, federal, state, regional, coastal, or local approvals, permits, licenses, certificates, and entitlements. And I'm going to just skip over that. You know, it, it's very detailed, but uh, any final, I mean, just any final OPM approvals and then, and final approval of any required amendment to Groton zoning regulations or final approval of subdivision applications and special permanent applications. Under governmental approvals, it's clear that uh, this, the text amendment to our zoning is a responsibility of the developer. And he's tried to pass this on to the town of Groton and uses, is using it as an excuse, uh, saying that he can't provide what is required in the development agreement because it's not his obligation. It clearly is under the agreement. So, I mean, among other things in the agree, you know, if you read the letter and read the development agreement, you can see that um, the items pointed to as if they're in some way in performance of the agreement are not. So I'd like, thank you, I'd like to urge the council to continue pursuing a default. Uh, the uh, developer's clearly in default. Um, and I think, you know, even uh, under the agreement, even if you're involved in any negotiations, you continue to pursue default. I think you should be given another notice of default and you should pursue that remedy. Um, I'd also like to urge you to keep the public informed as much as you can. I understand that your consultations with your council and strategies, you know, need to be kept close to the vest. But I think it's really important for the public to know where we're at and what you're doing. So, thank you for allowing us to have this information. And please continue to hopefully divorce us from this developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, I just wanted to note that Counselor O'Bree joined us at seven-oh-five. So we are at a full contingent of councilors with nine councilors. Thank you, Madam. Thank you. Um, the next person on the list is Linda Vogel, and I've been checking, and I don't see Ms. Vogel here. Um, so then we will go to our next speaker, who is Penny Miller. I believe Ms. Miller is here.
Yes.
Hello, you have the floor?
Thank you. Good evening, town councilors and mayor. Uh, this is Penny Miller, fifty-six Hancock Drive, Mystic. Thank you for the opportunity to speak uh, tonight. I am going to address the Mystic Oral School project. It is now clear that the Mystic River Bluffs project is not going to happen. The residents of Groton have spoken and overwhelmingly opposed the project. The Planning and Zoning Commission has said that it would not make the drastic zoning changes required for the project. It is my belief that you, the town councillors, were poorly advised and misled into supporting this project by some overzealous town planners in a quest for so-called economic development. You and the town were also done a disservice by those responsible for writing the development agreement, which heavily serves the developers' interests over the towns. It is now your task as town councillors to lead us out of the morass created by the town staff and attorneys. I hope that you will direct the town manager to take prompt action to part ways with Raspeler Homes. Severing the development agreement with Raspeler will be difficult and will almost surely come at a cost financially. But it will not cost the town as much as the infrastructure upgrades and tax increment financing promised in the development agreement had the project gone forward. Termination of the development agreement will automatically invalidate the purchase and sales agreement under which the state agreed to sell forty-eight acres of valuable land overlooking the Mystic River to Raspeler for one dollar. The state was willing to do this because it did not want to pay for fixing up decrepit buildings and removing environmental contamination brought about by its years-long neglect of the property. These are problems of the state's own making, and the state should be held accountable for fixing them. They cannot be made the responsibility of a new developer. Without prior remediation of the site, it will not be feasible financially to develop the property in a way that complies with the low-density residential zoning ordained by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I hope that the town council will work with our state senator and representative Heather Summers and Christine Connolly and insist that the state provide funding for repairing or demolishing the Mystic Oral School buildings and cleaning up the environmental contamination on the site. In sum, I urge you to exercise your authority to terminate the town's contract with Raspeler and to hold the state accountable for funding the needed remediation at the Mystic Oral School. These actions will pave the way toward a more appropriate development of the Mystic Oral School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Um, I see Ms. Vogel has arrived, and I tried to move you over to speak. Ms. Vogel, did you wish to speak tonight? You were on the list, too? Linda Vogel? Ms. Vogel, if you wish to speak, you have.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. You have the floor, ma'am. Thank you.
I would just, um, first of all, I would reiterate what uh, Ms. Miller said. I believe she spoke very well and has researched this very well. And I just want to add my voice to um, asking the town council to do its best to extricate the town from this very, very complicated mess. I support development of the Mystic Oral School, but I definitely do not support either the developer or the immensity of his proposed project. I am deeply concerned also that he seems to have been chosen as the favored developer without regard to his background, which includes criminal activities in New York State and incomplete projects in Connecticut. And it worries me that he was granted this opportunity without deeper vetting. I would hope moving forward, we can get funds from the state to demolish or rehabilitate the buildings and that we can move forward to develop the land in an appropriate way, which could include affordable housing as well as single homes, but not the immensity of what the Raspeler Development is talking about. I appreciate the efforts that you're all making. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vogel.
I have her address, by the way, as three-fifty-one Pequot Avenue.
Three-fifty-eight.
Three-fifty-eight, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, next on the list, I have Genevieve Surf. Ms. Surf, you have the floor?
Okay, just unmuted. Uh, okay, so my name is Genevieve Surf. I'm at Sixth Pearl Street in Mystic. And I'm going to play the part of Rachel Maddow tonight because Rachel Maddow loves reading legal transcripts. And so I'm going to pretend I'm Rachel Maddow. We happened to obtain, I think it was Attorney McCauser, who obtained this transcript by doing a fairly straightforward search of a legal database. And it's the transcript of the Criminal Court of the City of New York versus Jeffrey Raspeler. So the, the attorney, this is the Attorney General of the City of New York. Oh, and she used to work for the Attorney General. That's a big deal office. They don't just go after anybody for what Counselor Franco has pointed out or thought she was pointing out was a misdemeanor. What, what Mr. Raspeler, uh, what the state of New York went after Ms. Raspeler for had absolutely nothing to do with a misdemeanor. And I'm going to read just what he pleaded to. And the court said, um, before they uh, allowed him to plead, they said, um, do waive, they asked attorney, do waive the rights of the, of the rights and charge? They said, yes. And then there was also a disposition, in other words, they had already agreed to something. So the court said, "Mr. Raspeler, you heard your attorney indicate that you wish to enter a plea of guilty um, to a violation of penal law one oh-five-point-five. That is conspiracy in the fifth degree. Actually, it is four counts of that. Is that what you wish to do, sir?" The defendant, that's Mr. Raspeler, says, "Yes." The court, "All right, I understand that you wish to read something into the record as far as the allocation." They will let you do that at this point. Now, this is where Jeffrey Raspeler begins to speak. "From approximately April nineteen ninety-eight to April nineteen ninety-nine in Queens County and elsewhere, I agreed with Donald Scalfini, the business manager of Plumbers Local One and a fiduciary of its trade education fund to sell real property at address on Long Island to the Trade Education Fund for one-point-nine million, a price above the fair market value." Turned out to be about three-hundred thousand dollars above the fair market value. Um, that's as if somebody was trying to, to sell us something in a town or Groton to our retirement fund, um, to sell a piece of property to us. And somebody on the inside agreed to pay three-hundred thousand dollars more. That means that automatically our fund would be defrauded of three-hundred thousand dollars. I also, okay, this is Raspeler again. "I also agreed, among other means, to kick back to the Scalf, to Scalfini ten thousand dollars and did pay him appropriately approximately seven thousand dollars toward that amount, which money should have belonged to the Trade Education Fund. From approximately July two thousand to November two thousand in Queens and elsewhere, um, while intending to, to bribe officials with the New York City Department of Environmental Protection, I agreed with Joseph Roethsberger and others to engage in or cause the performance of such conduct. Pursuant to said agreement, I had Mr. Roethsberger deliver to John Bondenzo, an official of the New York City Department of Environment Protection, a benefit in the form of United States currency for the purpose of influencing Bondenzo's opinion, judgment, action, decision, or exercise of discretion of a public official. Also, as part of the scheme, I had Roethsberger deliver, deliver, delivered to Vincent Tripoli, an official of the New York City DEP, a benefit in the form..." Wait, what's the matter? "A benefit in the form of um, United States currency for the purpose of influencing Tripoli's opinion, judgment, et cetera. I exercised a discretion of, as a, as a public official." And then he also says, oh, in, in addition, he put some guy on the payroll, and he's intended to defraud the city, which I knew would rely on such instruments, and make them part of the records of the city. I agreed with John Valenza and others to engage in or cause the performance of such, of such conduct. I therefore paid Valenza three hundred dollars per week in order to have my company Plumbing Solutions um, hold, hold out to the Valenza as its bona fide and master plumber." You know, so it goes on and on. And the result is that the allocation, I'm going to cut to the chase here, is that he has, he has to pay three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to one entity, another seventy thousand dollars.
Ms. Surf, your time is up.
What?
Your time is up.
Okay. Just so you know, these are not misdemeanors, folks, you know? Why are you being so careful to negotiate with this man? I don't understand.
Thank you. Next up is Becca Welch. I believe Ms. Welch is here.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
You have the floor?
Um, first off, I want to thank Penny Miller for her excellent suggestions regarding the need of the town to work with the state regarding the environmental remediation needed at the oral school. It just makes sense. And next, I wanted to thank you, Madam Mayor and councilors, for releasing the letter from Raspeler Homes. Um, I appreciate the transparency. Given all that has transpired throughout the process of developing the oral school, I ask that you not go into executive session to discuss the project tonight, but instead speak publicly during this meeting so that we can all listen and continue to gain a better understanding of exactly what is happening with the property and the developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next two people I have on my list are Christina Specht and Susan Cready. And- The next two people I have on my list are Christina Specht and Susan Pretty. And Ms. Fanaf indicated that they were here for her cause, and she was going to go ahead and do the speaking this evening. I would just note that both of those citizens, or anyone else for that matter, is welcome to reach out to the council at any time via email or letter, and we would be happy to receive your comments. Next, then, is Kathy Pratt, Catherine Pratt, I believe. Yes, Ms. Pratt, you have the floor.
Hi, can you hear me okay? My name is Catherine Pratt, and I live at seventy-five Front Street in Nowank. Mayor Granatowski and members of the town council, in his letter of August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, to the town manager regarding the Mystic Education Center, the attorney for Rasppler Homes, Gary O'Connor, refers to the occurrence of frequent, detailed, and respectful communications between Rasppler, the town, and their respective consultants into six sets of documents, which he states were completed by Rasppler in satisfaction of section three point oh three of the Development Agreement, and emailed to John Reiner, Paige Bronk, and others. Attorney O'Connor also refers to detailed discussions between the town's team and Rasppler's team regarding, among other things, the widening of Oral School Road and the taking of land by the town through its power of eminent domain, discussions regarding expanding the size and scale of the proposed development beyond what is stated in the Development Agreement, a year's worth of negotiations between the town and Rasppler regarding a text amendment for a floating zone in connection with which significant documentation and information was exchanged, and over a year's worth of negotiations with regard to tax increment financing. As the majority of this information has not been disclosed to the citizens of the town, I respectfully request, in the interest of government transparency, that the town manager make available for public review by posting online, to the extent possible, the six submittals Attorney O'Connor refers to related to Development Agreement, section three point oh three, all records of discussions and matters pertaining to Oral School Road into increasing the size of the proposed development, the documents and information exchanged regarding the proposed zoning text amendment, the extensive and detailed materials said to be provided to the town on March second, twenty-twenty-one, regarding tax increment financing, and any other non-privileged documents, materials, drafts, correspondence, or other public records of communications referred to in the August seventeenth letter. On July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, the town attorney provided Rasppler with notice of the developer's material failure to perform numerous obligations under the Development Agreement and with notice of default. I urge the town council to carefully scrutinize all materials referred to in Attorney O'Connor's letter to determine whether these materials are in actual compliance with the deadlines and steps in the development process to be performed by Rasppler Homes, as O'Connor claims, or whether the developer has failed to fulfill its contractual obligations, as asserted by the town attorney, in which case there should be no deviation by the town from its current position that there has been a developer default. The town manager has stated that Rasppler Homes was chosen preferred developer in twenty eighteen. The exact date of this election has not been disclosed, but it must have been sometime between late September twenty eighteen, when the final evaluation score sheets were submitted, and the end of the calendar year. This would be a full year before the state, before the state and Rasppler signed the purchase and sale agreement in November twenty nineteen, and a full year before the Rasppler project was unveiled to the community. It is distressing that so much time elapsed after the preferred developer had already been selected, during which there was not one public announcement, and nothing on the town council agenda to inform residents of the proposal to build one of the largest apartment complexes in the state of Connecticut in a residential neighborhood of Mystic. Going forward, I hope that town officials and the town council, in their capacity as elected representatives of--
One minute.
--will seek to keep the public fully and fairly apprised of the Mystic Education Center redevelopment project's status and divert the need for additional Freedom of Information Act requests. Disclosing the items referred to in Attorney O'Connor's letter would be a commendable start. Thank you for your consideration of these matters.
Thank you, Ms. Pratt. Okay, that is all that I have on my list. I see Mr. Westervelt is here, and the clerk indicated that you had reached to her. So, Mr. Westervelt, if you wish to speak, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. My name is Scott Westervelt, and thank you, councilors as well. My name is Scott Westervelt. I live at Seven Boulder Court in Mystic, Connecticut. I'm calling, or, excuse me, I'm speaking today about a couple of things. One thing I'd like to do, though, is recognize the DPW for the outstanding job they did on Sandy Hollow Road. My daughter, actually, learning how to drive, ran her car off the road by hitting that bump at the bottom of Cal Hill Road and Sandy Hollow. So, that's been fixed, and it's incredible. It's working really well. So, thank you all very much for that. I'd also ask, and this may not be the forum, but I notice, because I, on my walks through this area, I go through, under the overpasses for I ninety-five, and the sidewalks actually end just before the bridges. So, I'm assuming it's a conduit thing, when they did work on the bridge, that they did not extend the sidewalks. However, I would like to know what we need to do to extend those sidewalks, because send a policeman down there to watch the speeds? It's almost like a raceway going underneath the bridges, and we could use some help with that. So, I'd like to know how to remedy that. So, the next thing I'll talk about is the Oral School project up the hill. Obviously, I am extremely opposed to the size of the mega-development that the town council and Rasppler have decided fits up there, because it absolutely does not. And I would hope that, based on the fact that there has been basically zero transparency up to this point, that the council does not vote to go into executive session. We've all seen where, well, where we're at because of executive sessions and closed meetings and the lack of transparency, and I think that's just not fair to the town of Groton. My next comments will be directed at town staff. Back when Mr. Rasppler made his pitch up at Northeast Academy, soon after that, my neighbors and I asked for Mr. Paige Bronk to come and talk to us about what was going on, because we wanted to know more about it. At that time, Mr. Bronk came to our neighborhood, walked, you know, through part of our properties with three of us, and told us that absolutely nothing was being done to lower Oral School Road. Now, in the last week or so, I'm hearing about detailed meetings that revolved around eminent domain and basically taking my property to expand Oral School Road. So, either Mr. Bronk lied to us when he was here, or those happened after the fact. Somehow, I don't think that's true. I will tell you that eminent domain, if you chose to go that route, you would end up probably taking ten to fourteen feet of my property so that you can build, so you could rebuild Oral School Road. Maybe you'll want to put on sidewalks, sidewalks that didn't go in Sandy Hollow, so I'm not sure why you would do that here. I guess I'm very upset. And then, with Mr. Reiner at that same meeting telling us, you know, nothing's been, nothing's been done, nothing's been done, yet now I find out about these discussions on eminent domain. I am absolutely opposed to any of that happening. I actually feel very put out by Mr. Bronk coming to my neighborhood, and basically, unless he can back it up, lying to us about what the intentions were or what the discussions were.
You have one minute.
I realize that may be very serious, however, it is serious if he has actually done that. My next comment would be for Mr. John Burt. John Burt did give me additional information on the RFP process. However, what he provided me was completely different than what I had been given back in May. The sheets are not the same, the forms are not the same, the evaluation criteria, the evaluation forms are completely different formats, completely different, and the names of the people are different than what we were told before. So, there's a problem there, where I'm getting two sets of information from Mr. Burt on what has happened. And now I hear there may, in fact, have been a third meeting as well. I'll let this go, because I realized I'm at the end of my time. But I gotta be honest with you, I'm kind of at the end of my rope with town staff not being honest and open with--
Thank you, Mr. Westervelt.
--me who pay their salaries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's everyone that I have on my list. There is another person here. I don't have a last name. Mr. Burt, do you have a last name for Jamie or Madam--
Do you have a last name? Yeah, it's Jamie Lee.
Can you, I don't--
L-E-E.
Okay. And did Ms., is it Ms. Lee, Mr. Lee? I'm sorry.
It is M-S period. I have, I have an email, but I get emails from her occasionally, so I know who she is. In other words, she's a bomb.
And I'm looking to see, I saw the name, and now I've got multiple pages. I've got to find it again. I'm sorry. There's Ms. Lee. Ms. Lee? Ms. Lee?
Yes, I'm here. I actually did not submit to present any comments--
Okay.
--during public--
I still wish to speak? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I have a bad connection.
That's okay. I thought I heard you say you did not submit, and you don't have any comments. Is that correct, or did I mishear you?
No, that is correct.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. All right, and that is everyone that I have on my list. So, let's see. I want to start off with the response, and I wanted to talk to Mr. Streeter before he has to, if you have to leave. But I was wondering if you would be able to send us a list of the people that were on the prior ad hoc committee regarding the Veterans Memorial, please? And that way, then, if the council so chooses, if there's consensus to do so, we can go ahead and proceed, and we will have the names of the people who you indicated would be willing to serve again. Is that possible, sir?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The problem is, one of the, one of the members has passed away, the other one is not interested. However, I do have a new gentleman, a Vietnam veteran, who would like to be interested. I could certainly email you the names and the addresses of the five individuals.
That would be great. Thank you so much. I'm not familiar with the whole process, how it was formed originally, or how it was funded, but those are all good things that we could take a look at. So, I appreciate you raising this and bringing it before the council. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, the next, I saw Counselor Heed had his hand up. Counselor Heed, did you wish to respond to citizens' petitions?
Actually, what I wanted to was ask Mr. Westervelt where he got the information about eminent domain, because I have never heard a town staff person say anything in favor of that. In fact, we had a long discussion when we were talking about the Sealy School development, that eminent domain would never, ever again happen after what happened in New London. So, I'd just be interested in finding out where he's getting that information. So, that was my question.
Thank you. Are there other councilors with questions? Counselor Overy?
I don't really have a question. I would just reiterate what Conrad Heed has just said to Scott Westervelt, that to the best of my knowledge, and I have been part of the selection group, there's never been any conversations about taking anybody's properties. And I would also like to say that the staff that we have is outstanding. They do an excellent job. They are professional in their approach. And if they tell you something, they are telling you what they know. And, you know, we seem to have had very many impressive speakers, and I'm wondering if any of these learned people might step forward and fill the many empty committee positions that we have. And I think it would be good if the people of Groton, for a little while, could talk about something else. We thoroughly understand your position, but you know, there could be a detrimental side to what is going on to the future of Groton. And I'd like to see us talking about some other issues that need to be worked on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Franco, responses?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. I always love to hear what everybody has to talk about what's going on in town. I think it might be prudent for us to look into what the leash laws are in the state of Connecticut and how they reflect on our community. And, Mr. Streeter, I thank you so much for bringing this issue forward. I think it's a wonderful idea to have an ad hoc committee, and we'll support that. And to talk about Bank Street and the parking issues in that area, I, from what I've gathered, town council doesn't get to decide if, you know, about parking issues on streets and that type of things, when it comes down to parking that's already there, but maybe the police chief could look into these issues. That would be wonderful.
We could refer that to the Traffic Authority.
Yes, okay. And for everybody who came out about Mystic Education Center, I can just repeat what I've said before. We absolutely hear you. We understand what you're saying. But while there are situations going on with contractual issues, we've been advised just not to publicly say certain things at this moment, regardless of how one might feel. So, trust me, we hear what you're saying, and things are definitely being worked on. And I have never, in any conversation, heard anything about eminent domain, so that it would be news to me if there was any kind of documents to state something of that. But thank you all for coming out, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor.
Mr. Burt, did you wish to say something, sir?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that John Reiner and Paige Bronk are on this call. I'd like them to address the eminent domain thing. And to tell you, I would never, ever support anything with eminent domain. And I, and that's always our line with staff. If anybody asks about it, nope, that's never gonna happen.
Right. I would just like to give any other councilors first--
Oh, sorry.
--okay, and then we will come, we will come to Mr. Reiner and Mr. Bronk to give response as well, then. Counselor Bordelon, responses?
Thank you. First, I just want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking tonight. You know, I wish that you're able to do this more frequently and not just once a month. I think it's really important to hear your input, your dialogue, your interest, and your, you know, concerns for your areas and your community at large. You know, regards to the leash regulations, I took note of that. The parking as well, I do see the concerns. I was up on the hills and the roads off of, by DPI the other day, and there was double-sided parking on the steep hill, and people had to slow up to pass through. So, I definitely think this should be addressed, and I know from a council standpoint, if there's not much we can do, I think it's important that we at least speak up and pass that forward to our town staff, traffic, and figure out ways. It's beautiful to see that Mystic is growing and thriving, but it is important to make sure that we figure out ways to make sure the folks who have been living there, you know, have quality of life as well, along with the noise concerns. So, I did hear all that. As far as the Rasppler project, as you guys know, I continue to advocate and ask for transparency, ask for documents, and make sure that we are doing our best. I think it's important. It is a little concerning. I've heard both sides of the coin, that, you know, it was the attorney's advisement not to oppose the project, but it was also the attorney's advisement not to put the letter forward, but now the letter's forward. So, I guess I'm looking for clarification on that as well. Is it appropriate to ask the town manager a question, Mayor?
Yes. Sure that he's-- Mr. Burt? --going to answer, Counselor Bordelon.
I mean, it's, we get vague answers, and so it's hard. I mean, when I keep asking questions, it's, you know, important to know where things stand, because it changes sometimes. So, Mr. Burt, our town manager? Is he here?
Yes.
He is here.
Okay. So, when I came on board-- Okay, so when I came on board to this council, this project was already in the process and you had a meeting with me and Paige Bronck. And I expressed my concerns at that point and then you said, see the project forward and I did. And I came out against the project because of not the project in itself, but for the, the vetting process and the RFP process that I didn't feel was strong and the location. Reading this document, it, it basically does not state that I cannot. And I hear that time and time again, and I've spoken to other folks that have read through this. Um, the consequence is the consequence. The point is, is as a counselor with my name attached to that, it's appropriate for my disposition to make sure that I'm representing something in its entirety. And so, um, from everything I've read in that document, just like you said, there was no intimate domain. There's nothing stating that I cannot oppose this project, um, because I didn't feel the proper vetting process was complete as stated. You had said before we could not release the letter. And then you changed your mind and the letter could be released. So I'm just looking for clarification on that.
Well, first of all, in terms of, we'll have to agree to disagree on uh, the legalese. But in terms of the letter, it was an ongoing discussion that um, reviewing it with the attorneys as to what's the effect is, it just evolved. And I, my, my position the entire time was I wanted to release it.
Wow. Okay, so once again, the opinion, attorney's opinion is not written in stone. It's an opinion. It's not what has to happen. It's a mere opinion. Correct?
True, but sometimes things are more obvious than other times.
Right, but an attorney's opinion is not something that says you, you don't or you'd have to do something a certain way. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Yep. Keep in mind, we have multiple opinions on that.
Thank you.
Um, Counselor Baumgartner, you had your hand up for responses, sir?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I too would like to thank all those who came out tonight to testify this evening. Just uh, reading through, I saw Mr. Westervelt brought up sidewalks, lack the rub along that road. Um, over um, Oral School Road and um, many other roads along Mystic that should definitely have sidewalks and um, I agree, you know, there are areas, not just in Mystic, but the entire town that are increasingly more frequented by pedestrians and folks who are enjoying our wonderful coastal access sites. And uh, a lack of sidewalks certainly puts uh, the, the safety of pedestrians and residents and visitors at risk. So um, long term, uh, any efforts we can make to invest in our improving pedestrian safety and sidewalks should be explored. Um, and so I thank you for that. Um, would like to um, speak on the um, letter um, from Ressplur um, that was sent um, to the town at our last council meeting. Had called for the release of that uh, document at the time. Uh, the town's official position was that they were not going to um, release the, or that they would not release the letter as it would not, um, they were not required to do so. Um, under FOI, um, the um, town manager subsequently released the letter uh, in the interest of transparency and um, felt that was um, very important and should be uh, common practice in the future. Um, additionally, um, that the town had wrote a letter um, asking the developer to cure those items. Um, that the town felt we were in deficiency over. Um, and that we, you know, we would reserve the right to use all options available to us, including uh,
You have one minute?
Exploring the termination of the agreement. Uh, since then, the town has received a letter stating not only um, that um, that they do not agree with that, but that uh, it is our role uh, to seek a zoning text amendment. Uh, I too share the beliefs stated by Attorney McHouser that it is not the role of the town to do so. And the development agreement uh, very clearly states that, and I think uh, that that has been my understanding from the get go, but I, I think it should be reminded to all um, listening in the meeting. And um, rest assured, as things are developing, um, we will be keeping a very close eye on things. And most importantly, I too agree that moving forward, uh, these matters ought not to be discussed in executive session. Uh, given the interest of many concerned citizens, it ought to be time that the public uh, gets uh, cued in on these discussions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other counselors who haven't spoken yet that wish to speak? Otherwise, I will turn the floor over to Mr. Reiner and Mr. Bronck. Maybe a minute. I just want to say I concur with Counselor Heed that um, eminent domain never crossed my mind and certainly would never be supported um, in this particular case. So, Mr. Burke, you wanted to have Mr. Reiner speak, sir?
Yes, please.
Mr. Reiner?
Good evening, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Um, I just want to say that uh, we never proposed eminent domain and we never supported eminent domain uh, for this project or any other project. I don't think there's really anything else that needs to be said about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Um, Mr. Burke, did you wish to defer to Mr. Bronck as well?
If he has anything to add.
Mr. Bronck, did you wish to add anything, sir?
Sure, Paige Brog, Economic and Community Development Manager. Just to affirm uh, what John Reiner had stated and council members. Um, we had never supported the use of eminent domain uh, and do not today. And I vividly remember being invited to the neighborhood uh, on Boulder Court. And I was happy to meet with the neighbors. My position at that time is consistent with today. I can't speak to anyone else's desires to use eminent domain, but we never supported it and don't today. Thank you.
We are on to the consent calendar. This is Roman numeral seven. Um, I just wanted to touch base with Chairman Melendez first. Chairman Melendez, was there a change done to the appointments that were included in the packet? Um, did that change happen at the meeting just prior to the council meeting, sir?
Yes, that's correct. Um, Annie Oosterwick, which, who was a, uh, already alternate, was moved to the recommended to be moved to the full position. And the two new candidates, Gary Robbins and Courtney McCracken, were recommended to be placed as alternates. Another point I would like to add is that um, the, the appointment of our tax abatement study had a resignation. So that should also be reflected uh, in your notes.
Thank you. So Madam Clerk, are you set with that? Um, with the changes that Chairman Melendez just noted?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much.
And is the council set with that, that we can move the consent calendar? Counselor Baumgartner, would you move the, I'm sorry. Um, I'm not sure if you just raised your hand or if that was there from earlier, Counselor Baumgartner?
No, I apologize. I tried to unmute myself.
That's okay. All right, would you move the consent calendar as amended, please, Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, I uh, moved the consent calendar as amended, as amended. Um, and Madam Mayor, would you like me to include the um, the items in the original motion as well for your record?
Um, well, it does include uh, Roman numeral seven one, Roman numeral seven two, and Roman numeral seven three as amended by Chairman Melendez. So we're good. So is there a second on the consent calendar?
Second, Parker.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Parker. Is there any discussion on the minutes?
Um, you did that, uh,
Counselor Overy?
I can't find myself.
Oh, I can tell you, I made a change. Sorry, sorry, Madam Mayor. Um, under, um, on the uh, August third um, meeting, Counselor Heed made a comment on responses to Citizens Commission, I mean, appointments, response to citizens petition. And he mentioned that the Pfizer building had been razed and the spelling was incorrect. It's R A Z E D. And I made that notation.
Thank you. Counselor Overy, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Yes, I don't believe it's been mentioned before, but it was late, but um, and I apologize for that. Under um, res- resolved that the town council appoint the following individuals as noted. No, that's not the one I want. I'm sorry. There was one in here where we uh, were working on the managers continuous. And we made a motion and it was um, unanimous except for one counselor. And um, that was left out.
Madam Burke, do you see that?
Yeah, I know what she's talking about. I think it's a page problem, but I'll, I'll make sure it's in there. Thanks.
Thank you, because I believe Porcher, Porcher abstained or said, no, I'm not sure.
Yes, I believe she abstained. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Counselors of Perry, do you have comments on um, the consent calendar, sir? Counselors of Perry, you have your hand up. Do you have a comment on the consent calendar?
Sorry, I left it muted.
That's okay.
On, on the minutes of August third, uh, page fourteen, overall, page ten of the minutes themselves. Um, uh, item ten point four. Uh, the votes are not recorded. It appears that we adopted uh, the acceptance of twenty point five acres of land. But the uh, the, the vote should be recorded nonetheless.
Madam Clerk, do you see that? The chart is blank.
Yes, I do. That's another lovely, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor, um, Counselor Franco, do you have a comment on the minutes?
I do as well. Um, so I see also on the votes, um, it says Counselor Melendez was in attendance at these. So on page eight, Melendez's vote is missing. On page nine, Melendez's vote is missing on two other actions as well.
Hold on one second, please. Can you, um, is this the um, page? Uh, let's see. Item number? Oh, I think I see it. This is consent calendar seven point one?
Yes. And seven point two and seven point three.
Okay, very good.
And it says he was in attendance at this meeting, so I'm not.
Right, I think he came late and he wasn't there, so I will review it, but I believe he came late.
Okay, because I believe where it says roll call, it says um, meeting was called to order at six thirty-three. All members are present.
Take a look at um, where it says consent calendar seven point one, right? Counselor Melendez lost connection to the meeting and was not available to vote on the consent calendar.
That's correct.
All right, but as I saw, the other ones were missing. I just didn't know if it was another glitch. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, Counselor Baumgartner on the minutes?
Um, no, but I would just like to remind counselors to refer to fellow counselors by their last name and their title. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good, and um, I just want to give a thank you to all the people who made the um, contributions for your generosity. That's, it always continues to amaze me how generous the people of Groton are and all their contributions to help the rest of the community. So thank you very much. Um, and I see no other hands, so we will vote on the consent calendar as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. Um, we are going to communications and reports, but it's seven fifty-three and normally when it gets to be about this time, I get a request for a recess. Would you guys like a five-minute recess? Council would like a recess for five?
Yes.
It's seven fifty-three, so we will recess until seven fifty-eight. All right, thank you. To
Recording in progress.
Sorry. Hello, we're back. It is seven fifty-nine and we are on Roman numeral eight, communication and reports, other than committee reports. We start with town counselors and um, I just wanted to begin this evening. And I wanted to thank um, the council and in particular Counselor Parker uh, for stepping up to the plate at the last committee of the whole meeting and very ably um, managing the meeting. So thank you so much, Counselor Parker, um, for taking care of that. Um, as far as other communications, I attended a city planning workshop where um, the planner, Sierra Patrick, was in attendance. And the reason why I was there um, was to talk about public art as um, Joyce Supple's uh, who is a coworker and friend, the woman who did the sub-trail. We had been talking about public art in the town and um, Ms. Patrick asked us to attend to talk about um, our ideas and um, Ms. Supple's very ably presented her views at that meeting. Uh, there was a long-term recovery meeting. And um, Ms. Harkin from Planning and Development Services is uh, developing in conjunction with the rest of the staff uh, application and they process for dispersal of the funds, the federal funds. Um, our next meeting is September fifteenth at five thirty. We're meeting more frequently as it's getting closer to the time where we will be getting to accept applications. And I just wanted to let everybody know that um, the Groton Lodge of the Elks, um, I received a letter from Exalted Ruler Joanne Donnell that they are holding a September eleventh ceremony um, at nine AM at the City Municipal Building. And the public is invited to attend. Um, it is the anniversary, twentieth anniversary, and they have um, a list of events that will be taking place. So again, that's at the City of Groton Municipal Building. The Elks Lodge is the sponsor and everybody, um, town and city is welcome to attend. So thank you, Ms. Donnell, um, and Ms. Martin for sending that invitation to the council and to the rest of the community. And I think that's all I have as far as communication. So, Counselor Baumgartner?
No report.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
Um, yes, currently I've been attending, well, I've attended one meeting. There'll be several others for the teacher negotiations. Um, I'm glad I'm on it. I know several of the people involved and I want to thank the Board of Ed and all others that were there for welcoming me on board. And um, also attended the convocation for, at Pitch High School for all the teachers and parents getting ready to open back up for school. And I want to wish everyone, I hope everyone had a wonderful first day. I know there were some concerns going on and hopefully those will be ironed out. Just give everybody some time. It is the very first day and there's new traffic patterns and new systems being brought about. Just be patient and everything will iron out. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. Um, I got back while you, uh, the mayor was discussing her comments and I wanted to let everybody know that maybe I missed it, but the meeting is not being re, uh, shown on GMTV right now. And um, but I have no other report. Thank you.
Um, there's a city meeting this evening and I understand there was some, uh, Mr. Burke, I can't remember which one is being shown where, but the city meeting and our town council meeting are being done simultaneously.
Right.
If you could refresh our memory?
Uh, and Sean can correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, the city one is on YouTube GMTV and the town one is on cable GMTV.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Counselor Heed?
Uh, nothing to report.
Counselor Overy?
Yes, um, I attended also the long-term committee meeting. And I have to say that the staff of the EDC is giving us great guidance. And I think we'll do a better job because of that and also as our town manager. And um, I thought it might be good, uh, just to remind everybody that the football season is kicking off and Friday night at, under the lights, uh, Groton will be playing Stonington. My grandson plays for Stonington, so I'm not sure where I'll be sitting, but it should be quite a good game. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Bordelone, communications?
Um, I just was gonna say that I attended the long-term
I just was going to say that I attended the long-term recovery meeting, and Councillor Ogbree, I'll see you at the game. I'll be watching, my son does marching band, so I'm really excited that this year, I think it was about 27 returning post-COVID. They didn't have much of a marching band season last year, and a lot of change in staff, and they pulled it together, and so I encourage everybody to come out and support them, and hopefully they'll continue to grow and move forward. So, but also excited for football again as well.
Councillor Melendez?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I received a correspondence from a resident about Bindless Road. They had concerns about the condition of the road, and I'll just ask the town manager, what is, where is that road in, you might not know at the moment offhand, but do you know where that road is in terms of our schedule for repairing roads?
I don't off the top of my head, but I'll find out.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, and Councillors of Perry, Communications?
No report.
Thank you. Clerk of the representative town meeting?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The RTM canceled their August meeting, so there's nothing to report as far as, excuse me, the September meeting, not the August. So as far as I know, there's nothing on the horizon unless there's something that's coming up, and otherwise, they may meet in October. I would hope so, but we do have a resignation from District 4, from Michael Whitehouse, and he is now serving as a commissioner on the Economic Development Commission, which is a good place for him. And they, so the RTM will meet, they do meet on the second Wednesday in October at 7:30.
Thank you. Clerk of the council?
Just the same information you have. There were quite a few thank you notes sent to the council from various outside agencies for the donations that were included in the FYE 2022 budget, and that was, you should have received all of those, and that should go to the RTM also. The ballots are, we've issued 87 ballots. We've received 33 back as of this afternoon for the primary that's going to be held on the 14th of September. Upholes are open, so where you normally would vote, that's where you're going to vote September 14th. The winners from that, there'll be nine council candidates, the highest vote getters, will go on to the November ballot. Those ballots are also printed in Spanish and English as required by this council, and so let's see, anything else? Nothing else that I can report? If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Mr. Burt, report from the manager.
Just to mention the ongoing indoor mask mandate, that's been going pretty well. When we do receive complaints about a business, if it falls under the jurisdiction of Led's Light, then they go and check on it. And if it doesn't, then our police go and check on it. Whenever we hear of that, besides our police checking on it, I send a packet of all the information to them, and it's been going pretty well, all in all. Nautilus Dock at the, at the Nautilus Museum there, the dock will be, construction is finally after several years, starting in January, should be done in the March-April timeframe, and it kind of lucked out that they're actually going to be dry-docking the sub, then painting it and restoring it some, so it gets that out of the way, so really timed out well. So excited to finally see that go through. Few odds and ends. Painting of the trim at the town hall, that's going to begin, begin September 13th, so that's been in the queue for a while. Be eager to see that done. I always look at that trim. It always irritates me. The Route 1 retaining wall, the contractors, where those jersey barriers are as you enter downtown Mystic. The work's going to begin on September 14th. And then Route 1 northbound, there'll be a closure with detour beginning on November 2nd and ending December 2nd, so that'll be you know, kind of a issue for a while. Let's see. Shopping carts, we had a few complaints about shopping carts over in the area of our Avery monument over there by Plaquenac Road by CBS. Starting about three weeks ago now, I think it is, our public works should go by once a week, collecting up those carts that are kind of all along that road there, and taking them back to the shopping centers. That seems to be working out pretty well. So it doesn't stack up too much, so we'll keep doing that. And just to mention that we are in the process of working with the Green Bank for Solar, for Cutler, for the former Cutler Elementary and the middle school. And the reason the other elementary's not in that queue is because this is not in the same, it's an ever-source district, and they don't have that same program going with the Groton utilities. But we are working on that one, too. And other than that, that's all I have. Ready for questions?
Thank you. And Superintendent Austin notified us that she could not be here this evening. It's been a busy day for her, I'm sure.
Oh, can I just add one quick thing?
Yes, please.
As you remember, there's, there was a, it's been brought up about the possibility of doing something, looking at funding for the Fitch High School fieldhouse there, that we all know is in terrible shape. I do have a message in, a couple messages into the school, but I just, you know, I am working on that and trying to progress that. Once we hear back from the school, then we'll figure out a date for bringing it to the council to talk about.
And that would be, he's referring to Councillor Melendez's referral to potentially have the town and the schools submit a joint application for funding in order to repair the fieldhouse adjacent to the football field. All right, so we are on to Committee Reports. I don't have anything to report. Personnel and appointments. Chairman Melendez, did you want to add anything else, or was your report earlier sufficient, sir?
Well, I would just like to add that the Tax Abatement Study Committee has currently three members on it, and we are looking for two other members. I believe we need all five before we can start, before they can start their study. I don't think you can go with three because it's a quorum, so we need two more for that before we can get that started. So if anyone's interested, please contact the town clerk.
Right, so they can contact the town clerk. And if they're not sure how to do that, they can always send an email to council@grotonct.gov, and we could direct them to the appropriate forms in order to apply. Rules, Chairman Ogbree, anything to report?
No meeting, no report.
Public safety, Chairman Baumgartner, anything to report?
No meeting, no report.
Thank you. We are on to New Business, Roman numeral 10. This is on page 23. Let me get there. 2021-585 Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments Navigator Position Funding Request, and I believe this will be Councillor Parker.
Resolution to approve ARPA funds for the Southeast Connecticut Council of Governments, whereas the Town of Groton is the recipient of federal funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA of 2021, and whereas the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments COGS made a request to all member municipalities for 1% of the county allotted funds received to be paid equally over a four-year period, and whereas the Town, for the Town of Groton, 1% of the ARPA county funds equals to $56,364.06, and whereas SC, SC COGS will utilize these funds primarily to hire Recovery Coordinator Position, Coordinator Position, I'm going to take out one of those positions, to help its member municipalities with determining eligible uses of their ARPA funds and other assistance as necessary. And whereas the Town Council supports this request due to its regional nature of, to ensure all SCCOG members, municipalities are successful in utilizing their ARPA funds, now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Groton approves 1% of its American Rescue Plan Act county funds totaling $56,364.06 to be paid in equal parts over four years, and be it further resolved that the total of the $56,364.06 will be deposited in the Town's ARPA funds to be paid on annual basis, and be it further resolved that this request shall be forwarded to the Groton representative town meeting for approval. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Councillor Perry. And this was discussed in Cow, so I'm assuming everyone is all set with this item. Okay, seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2021-585 SCCOG Navigator Position Funding Request. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved unanimously. Thank you. To Roman numeral 10B, this is 2021-613 Beautification Committee Funding Request, and I believe this is Councillor Franco.
Thank you. Resolution for the FYE 2022 General Contingency Transfer to Legislative Policy for Beautification Committee. Whereas the Town Charter provides for general contingency transfers during the year, whereas the Town of Groton established a beautification committee on August 17, and whereas the Beautification Committee's directive is to enhance the appearance of the community utilizing the residents of Groton as volunteer base, and whereas the Groton Beautification Committee is, has taken on many projects using only volunteers and donated funds, and whereas the Beautification Committee is requesting $9,000 to accomplish projects that would be difficult to accomplish without appropriate funding, and whereas the Town Council supports the endeavors of its Beautification Committee to make the Town of Groton a more attractive place to live, work, and visit, now therefore be resolved that $9,000 is transferred from the General Fund Contingency Function 1094 to the Legislative Policy Initiative Account 100107-5300 to the Beautification Committee. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Ogbree. Thank you. Since I was unable to be here for the committee meeting, this was discussed, I wanted to thank Chairman Fortner for her work on this, and I was able to listen to the meeting, and it sounds like there's going to be some plantings done, and there's going to be some work on a mural to kind of revitalize the center of town, so thank you very much for that work. Look forward to seeing some progress on that. Councillor Franco?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that I am a liaison member to that committee for transparency.
As is Councillor Ogbree. Actually, Councillor Ogbree's a member, correct?
Yes, yes, I am.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other discussion, we will vote on 2021-613 Beautification Committee Funding Request. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with nine councillors. Thank you. We are on page 25. This is 2021-503 Continuation of Trails Coordinating Task Force, and I believe this should be Councillor Heath.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll make a resolution extending the terms of the Trails Coordinating Task Force, whereas on December 4th, 2020, sorry, December 4th, 2012, the Town Council authorized the formation of the Trails Coordinating Task Force, and whereas the task force has requested that its term be extended by three years to continue pursuing its objectives of assisting in the planning and development of trails, seeking funding for trail development, making recommendations regarding signage, markings, and use policies, and serving as an educational and advocacy group for the use and expansion of the trail network. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council extends the terms of the, the term of the Trails Coordinating Task Force and its members to December 31st, 2024. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Heath and seconded by Ogbree. And again, these were discussed in committee. I see no further discussion, so we will vote on 2021-503 Continuation of Trails Coordinating Task Force. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. Right, we are on to 2021-5331 Miranda Creative Senior Center Rebranding. This is page 26 in your packet, and we have Councillor Ogbree, please.
Let's see. Excuse me, got to put on a light. Resolution approving the renaming of the Groton Senior Center to Thrive 55 Active Living Center. Whereas the Town Council heard a presentation from Miranda Creative on the process and feedback from the community on rebranding the senior center, including changing the name of the center. And whereas the council supported the proposal name change to Thrive 55 Active Living Center, and now will therefore be resolved that the council hereby approves the proposed name change for Groton Senior Center to Thrive 55 Active Living Center. I so move.
Second, Franco?
Moved by Ogbree and seconded by Franco to rebrand as Thrive 55 Plus Active Living Center. And we have discussion on the side. Give me one second, please. I have to make a note of where we are. And I see Councillor Baumgartner and Franco, so Councillor Baumgartner, you have the first, the floor first, sir.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Last meeting, or council meeting, we voted to approve this item. I was under the impression, I, you know, for one, obviously, we've had this on tonight's agenda, as an agenda item, to approve as a, you know, regular council meeting, therefore, what we approve tonight will be binding. You know, I fully support the work that Miranda Creative did on this matter. I just was wondering for, you know, obviously, this has been a very quick turnaround, so I imagine if we're going to literally change the name of the Groton Senior Center this quickly, we are going to, it's going to elicit some feedback, and I'm wondering if we need to continue kind of vetting that name change by the public before we change it as quickly as we have. And I'm not, not to undermine the work that has already been done. It was a great study. The presentation was amazing. But this is obviously pretty significant, and I was wondering if, you know, it'd be beneficial to elicit, you know, the feedback of current residents about this name change as it's happened rather quickly. Thank you.
Mr. Burt?
Yes.
They outlined a process where, in order to arrive at the name, they went through a series of outreach steps, and I believe they're going to continue doing outreach, and they're going to roll this out rather slowly as, I hate to say it this way, but like when they run out of stationery, then they'll, then they'll rebrand that, and when they run out of this, then they'll do, if you could just speak to that, please?
Well, that is all correct. Unfortunately, I don't have my last agenda pack with that information, but you are correct that at the last meeting, park staff did go through the entire process of public vetting, and that you are correct, they don't want to spend a bunch of money turning things over, so it'll be done slowly. They'd have to go to the council likely for funding to do, you know, signage, that kind of thing, so yeah, it's not going to be an overnight thing.
Does, does that answer, does that address your concerns, Councillor Baumgartner?
It does, and I know last meeting it was brought up, is it appropriate to include Groton in it? And, you know, obviously, this is a long-term move, and so, you know, obviously, this is a a public asset funded by Groton taxpayers, not taxpayers of Stonington or New London or some of our surrounding municipalities, but it is also a regional asset, as I was articulating in the last meeting, in that there are seniors who come in from surrounding communities, and they very much cherish the great services that are offered there, so I, again, just to reinforce, this is a building and an asset owned and operated by Groton taxpayers, and so you know, part of me does wish we did include that in the name. I don't think that's a deal breaker either way, but just wanted to articulate that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Councillor Franco.
Thank you. I was just wanting to ask the town manager what the timeline would be if this is passed tonight.
Timeline for which part?
The name. The name change. Like changing on the building and how would this like?
Yeah, that, that'll like, as mentioned, that would take a while. They're not rushing, you know, they don't want to spend any, spend any extra money. My, my guess is on the signage that they'll likely have to come back for more funds. I'll double, I'd have to double check that with Mark, though, but I believe that's the plan. I don't think it's anything quick.
Thank you.
And I just found my packet and it also says that there will be a follow-up survey approximately 24 months after the beginning to measure the impact of the new branding. So it is something that they're going to keep in mind. They're going to be mindful of and the changes actually accomplishing goals that they wanted to accomplish. Council Board along?
Thank you. For the Town Manager John, it was stated at the last meeting that the, I was excited for the change and to see that, but it was like when it was presented to us, there was no chance for us to, even if we had a suggestion, to make any modifications at that point. Everything was final. Is that correct, John?
Well, they presented the results. I mean, the council can do whatever the council wants and the council chose to vote that forward.
But when it was presented, as you stated in the last meeting in my notes here, as well as the presenter, that it was too late to make any changes thus far where we were.
I don't recall myself saying that, but I, the council can always make a change. That's entirely up to the council. Nothing happens without the council's approval.
So looking back, as I watched the meeting again before this, and I have my notes, the design that came forward was after the, they did their process and moved it forward. And so it was presented to us. And you stated that, you know, in future, you would speak to Mark to make sure that they came, came to us, you know, before it was at the final.
But that's correct. That's different than what I was saying. What I'm saying is even if you weren't in that middle piece, at the end, nothing happens without your vote. That's right. That's what I'm speaking through right now.
Right, but the design, we couldn't do nothing. As the lady stated, we could not make any change to the design. We had it either voted up or down.
For that night, unless you wanted to make a motion to totally do something different. Again, it's all up to the council.
So what I have here is, and from what I rewatched it to make sure I clarified, it was that that night that it was presented, there was, it was too late in the game to make any changes. What was presented was its final product.
For that process, that's again, a different thing. For that, for hiring that company, doing the process, it was too late for that process. However, you can change it anytime you want. You can change it tonight. You can change it anytime. So you were talking about two different things.
Right, right. But we couldn't change the design, so we had to either vote that design up or down. That's what she had only available.
Right.
Okay, so it was like the end phase. And so when I asked, like, are we having discussion to be able to modify this design? It was told that that was the end. So I don't know, I just thought that, and you had stated, it would be, you'd speak to, to Mark Barry to make sure that we're brought in a little earlier to discuss these things. I think that would be helpful versus kind of bringing the final product at the end. Because the money has already been spent in all the design work. And we only have the option to vote it up or down, not to really change that. So I, I just, I mean, I think it's great. I, I also think the name Groton should also be in there. I think it's important, as it was stated at the meeting, that some folks, you know, I'm not saying it should say Senior Citizen Center either, but I think whatever we do is, you know, a cost. And it's a, you know, it can be semi-permanent. That is a fairly new building, so it's important that what we do, we kind of, you know, really make sure it's something we really want long-term. So I just have trouble with not the change of it, but like really only having the option to vote it up or down at that point. So it would be helpful to have these items a little bit sooner on in the process. Thank you.
Council Obray?
Yes, if I might, I've worked with this company before and had the pleasure of working with them. They worked with Mash to change their logo to Always Home. And I'm quite sure they went through the same process that they did with us in the fact that there was a committee and the committee worked with them. There's numerous meetings where they talk about what's appropriate, what's not appropriate. And I know it was mentioned that they had done surveys and the surveys had come back in a positive manner. So I would be very comfortable saying that I'm sure that this same process went on. This woman is a, is a known professional and very, very good at helping organizations to rebrand in order to reach a different audience. So I think what they brought to us was the results of the committee. I think we should respect the committee. I think we should respect the parks and rec for the surveys that they did and move forward with this. And I think it'll be a, a real asset to opening the senior center to more people. I yield the floor.
Thank you. First time speakers before we go to second time speakers. Council Heed.
Yes, just a, first a question for Mr. Burt. I'm pretty sure that this survey was, was public. So if a counselor had wanted to participate, we could have done that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Alright, and I, I'll echo what Counselor Obray has, has stated. This is a professional organization. I'm pretty comfortable with their, their decision or their outcome and their process. That said, I, I also understand that this is, correct me if I'm wrong, this is sort of the beginning of where we started. Now it'll take quite a bit of time before it changes. So will there be time for any additional public input? Will it be solicited? Is, would be my question.
Well, it depends what the council wants to do. Again, this, you're giving approval. But if so directed, they could say, let's put it out, there's approved, but then give it a little while, make sure that nothing much is done until we get further feedback in case there's any issue.
I, I'd be happy. I will be voting to approve it tonight, but if it just becomes public, that it's not a surprise to people, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. And again, the, the packet that we've received indicated that they're going to be doing surveys along the way. Miranda Creative will be doing the surveys and then the town staff will also be walking this forward. And we have several second time speakers, but I just wanted to give the option for first time speakers before we go to second time. Okay, so Council Franco, you were first on the list for second time. Are you set?
I took my hand down. Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Baumgartner, this is your second time, sir. Have you had the floor?
Yes, thank you. A clarifying question. I, I heard that there was an opportunity for, you know, those interested, whether they be in the council or elsewhere, to participate early on in the process in, in as part of these surveys and collaborative efforts. When, when, when did this start? And is it just, just, is that a cure, out of curiosity, was this also a matter that we explicitly as a council approved to, to research or, or embark on?
I, I can't, I don't have the packet in front of me. The mayor does. But I think Mark answered some of those questions at the last meeting. But I believe the council approved the, if I remember correctly, the study upfront. But I mean, if the council wants, I could try to get Mark Barry on the phone, but I'm not comfortable since I wasn't involved answering these questions.
It said the study was conducted in 2019 for the Groton Senior Center, revealing that the word senior affected patronage. I'm trying to look. This, this was the packet of, let me just find the date for you guys if you want to pull yours out, too. This is August 10th. The August 10th Cow is when we, when we dealt with this. So 2019 is when it all began. And here we are in 2021 with them having gone through literally hundreds of participants and focus groups according to what we were presented at that. So I have for this point.
Yes, and, and as it was mentioned, countless individuals as part of Parks and Recreation Team and the Senior Center Team were a part of these efforts and just want to commend their, their continued efforts, not just with this, their rebranding efforts, but also their continuous operation of the senior center in, in these difficult times. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Board along for your second time?
Thank you. Yeah, looking at this, John, what's the roughly, the idea of the cost that's going to be involved in this in the end?
Well, as mentioned, they're going to do things slowly over time. I think the signage would probably be the biggest thing that would actually cost anything.
What are we looking at? Because like, I think it's important before I approve something to have numbers on here, at least rough estimates of what we think it may cost to put the sign on the building. Do we have an idea at all?
Again, would you, would the council like me to try to get a hold of Mark Barry? I do not know the answer to those type of questions.
Because I, I guess what we're proving is moving this forward with the design, even though it moves slowly, I think we're proving the whole fact, and no matter who's seated at the council, this approval will be a standing approval. So how much is going to be going into deciding? What is the cost? I understand the stationery may run out, but what's the cost of actually the construction of the sign, I guess, is my, my large question.
There's a wide variety. You can spend on a sign. You could spend hardly anything. You could spend lots of money. I can't answer that. Well, it'll have to be designed. I imagine it wouldn't be a, yeah, a whole lot different than what we've done for other signs. I, I'm going to guess a few thousand dollars.
So would that come back before the council to approve the dollar amount with the design then? Or is this a blanket approval and, and who's going to decide which sign it's going to be and what cost?
It all decided, it all depends on what the cost ends up being. I mean, if it's 200 bucks, if $200, then they could do it themselves. But there's no requirement to come back unless the amount, unless they don't have the actual funding, then they have to come back for the funding.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Council Obray for your second time?
I just want to say that I'm sure that in the process, the things were discussed. And I would expect in the next budget session, you'll probably see some things that they're asking for that will relate to this sign. We have a process for everything that goes on in this town. You come in and something may be approved, but you don't necessarily approve the money. We approved the signs throughout the town. We had an estimate and we went forward with that. So I think we're, we're beating something that doesn't need to be beaten. I think it's, they've put in their time, their effort, and they've worked with a very professional organization. And all we're doing is saying, we think this is a good idea. We're not advocating, we're not putting in money, we're not putting in anything else. We're just seeing a co, a committee that did its job. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, seeing other hands, we'll vote on 2021 533 Miranda Creative Senior Center Rebranding. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That moves unanimously. Nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. Okay, we are on to 2021 6121 RTM Civilian Oversight Research Committee Report. This is on page 27, and I believe we're on Counselor Board along. I will pass. Counselor Melendez, are you prepared to read 2021 612?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
I make a motion recommending a resolution to establish a police and community together pact committee. Whereas the representative town meeting RTM established a civilian oversight research committee Cork in 2020 with the charge of creating a document with recommendations for the full RTM. And whereas the RTM Cork approved the final report unanimously at their December 1st, 2020 meeting and referred it to the full RTM. And whereas the RTM unanimously approved the Cork report at their December 9th, 2020 meeting and referred it to the town council. And whereas the town council mayor referred a final report to the town, the town's public safety committee. And whereas the town's public safety committee recommended approval of the Cork final reports, three consensus recommendations to the council, town council. And whereas the town council at their August 24th, 2021 committee of the whole meeting recommended approval of the final Cork report consensus recommendation number two, being the establishment of a police and community collaborative group. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Groton Police and Citizens Together Pact Group is hereby established with the following parameters. Purpose: Build strong relationships between police and the community. Increase communication, exchange of ideas between the police and community. Advise the police chief, town manager, town council, and the public safety committee on police and community issues within the confines of any laws and policies. Membership: There shall be up to 11 members of the committee to be appointed to the town council, consisting of the following. Town of Groton Police Chief or their designee, town manager or their designee, one town counselor, one representative town meeting member, one Groton Board of Education member, six residents of the town of Groton to consist of two-year terms. Chairmanship shall be decided annually by the pact. Resident, counselor, and RTM position shall be appointed by the town council following recommendation from the personnel committee. Training: The committee shall receive occasional training on Connecticut laws pertaining to policing as well as local policies. Meetings: The committee shall meet at least quarterly. So moved.
Second, Franco.
Thank you. That is moved by Melendez and seconded by Franco. Counselor Melendez?
Yes, um, I'd like to make an amended motion and I'm trying to figure out the easiest way to possibly do this. Um, I-
Hold on one second. Let's make sure the clerk is ready to go with her either typing skills or her pen. Madam Clerk, are you prepared to report the amended emotion?
I can give it a good try, but it's actually, it's actually the, but it behoves the counselor who's making the change to put it in writing. But I will work with you guys.
Thank you so much. Counselor Melendez, go ahead.
Okay, um, I, I think, um, that, one, two, three, four, five, that sixth, whereas, whereas the town council at their August 24th, 2021 committee of the whole meeting recommended approval of the final Cork report consensus recommendations. Where it says number two, basically what I'm trying to achieve is do all three, one, two, and three. So I think if you take out-
Just change, excuse me, just change recommendation to recommendations and then put in all three recommendations, period.
Okay, that's fine. If you want me to write that sentence, because the rest I, I wish to remain the same?
Yep. Just taking out, you're just taking out number two and putting in all three recommendations, just making recommendations plural, right?
So then it will read, I'm going to read it, Counselor Melendez, you tell me if this is, if this is your intention, please? I want to read it. So we are on the one, two, three, four, five, the sixth whereas. And it will read, whereas the town council at their August 24th, 2021 committee of the whole meeting recommended approval of the final Cork report consensus recommendations being the establishment of a police and community collaborative group, now therefore be it.
Yes.
Is that your intention, sir?
Yes, that'll do.
Madam Clerk, do you have that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, is there a second on the proposed amendment?
Second, Board along.
Melendez, seconded by Board along.
I had seconded it earlier.
I had Melendez and Franco for the whole resolution, but for Counselor Melendez's amendment, I have Melendez and Board along. Alright, so now we have one amendment within the overall motion. So we should discuss the amendment first, I would assume, would be the best way to go with this. So is there a discussion on the amendment? And since you made the motion, Counselor Melendez, you may speak first to your amendment. Do you wish to, oops, I corrected, timer off before. Counselor Melendez, do you wish to speak to your amendment?
Yes, I'll just speak briefly. I believe the, the, the thinking in only approving number two was that numbers one and number three were already in, in motion and in effect. But I do think that, you know, administrations change, councils change. So I think that we should codify all three. you know, administrations change, councils change, um, so I think that we should codify all three. Um, because i- it could be, you know, I think they're all three important things to do. Uh, so I, I think we should just put them all in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will be speaking to Councilor Melendez's amendment at this point. Counselor, I saw Councilor Franco, Parker, Zeperry, and Bumgardner. Let me just write that really quickly, please. Franco, Parker, Zeperry, Bumgardner, Bordelone, and we are speaking to Councilor Melendez's amendment at this point. Thank you. Councilor Franco, you have the floor.
All right, before my time starts, I need a clarifying question. Are we taking the whereas and saying at their council, at the August 24th Committee of the Whole Meeting, recommended approval of the final Cork report consensus recommendation, because that didn't actually happen then? So we have- So, is that how the wording is?
That's, that's why I read it. So do you wish to amend, uh, do you wish to-
I am gonna, yeah, I'm gonna make an amended motion.
Okay, slowly, please, okay?
So I have something checked out already for what I wanted to put in. And for this section, I want it to be clarified.
Get it to us, please.
Well, the first part is, I need to clarify that the resolved, I mean, the whereas does not state that, that we actually voted that way on August 24th, so that needs to be stricken.
So you are, Franco's looking at striking at their August 24th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting? Strike that?
Yeah, strike that. Just the town council recommended approval of the final Cork report consensus recommendation, comma. And then it should be the three items. And then I'm going to put in the chat what I have prepared.
You are, we're on the sixth whereas. You're striking parts of the sixth whereas and you're making an addition.
Yes.
Thank you. If everybody can, I, I know we're not supposed to be using the chat here, guys, but-
I will read it out loud, and it's just for you, for somebody can copy and paste it into their documents for the town.
Madam Clerk, that's all you.
That's right, I'm doing it.
So my, I will add to the amended motion, an amended motion to name the committee, the Community Outreach for Public Safety, which will be the acronym of COPS, as well as a membership of five, which would include two police representatives and three non-elected citizens for two-year terms, allowing the town manager and school administration to be ex officio members.
I'll second, heed.
Okay, hold on. Okay, so I'm gonna just, um, read it, read it back, and, um, you tell me if we have it straight, that is for the benefit of the people at home and for the counselors. So Councilor Franco's amendment, this is the second amendment. Councilor Melendez made one amendment, Councilor Franco is making a second amendment to the sixth whereas. Whereas the town council recommended approval of the final Cork report consensus recommendations, being the establishment of a police and community collaborative group. Um, so that's gonna have to go in here.
But, that's not the essence, that's not the essence of what I'm looking for.
Yeah, I know, I wasn't finished. I'm sorry. I was trying to find where your typing in the chat would go in. I think it's gonna have to go in here. Uh, so it's gonna be whereas the town council recommended approval of the final Cork report consensus recommendations, being the establishment of the Community Outreach for Public Safety, COPS, as well as a membership of five, which would include two police representatives, three non-elected citizens for two-year terms, allowing the town manager and school administration to be ex officio members. Is that what you want? Because then that is gonna then trigger other things that have to be changed as well.
So in the whereas, I'm looking for it to state that all three of the Cork recommendations should be in here. That is the essence of my, my request. And the amended motion is to change items inside of the membership.
So you then would be deleting everything in the membership section?
Not everything.
Well, what stays the same?
Chairmanship will be decided annually. I, and change the name, of course. And that the positions would be appointed by the town council following recommendations by the personnel committee. The resident positions.
It's not the same of what it is right now? I'm sorry, because you have, I'm sorry to interrupt, you have one rotten Board of Ed member, you want, you want the administration, gotten adminis- Board of Education Administration, right?
No. I, I, what I'm, it's in the writing where it's the group of the five people.
Yep.
It would be two police representatives and three non-elected citizens. And I would strike out, I would strike out the town manager, the town counselors, the RTM members, the Board of Ed members, because I don't think elected officials should be part of this and it shouldn't be political. But I haven't gotten to my second to be able to speak on it.
Okay.
You have a second already.
Or we're trying to figure out the wording first.
Yes, well, he jumped in and seconded it. And then I was getting clarification, so he can, he's welcome to, after, after we get it clarified, he's welcome to withdraw if he doesn't agree, but I think, um, I don't see that happening. Um, so are you, are you clear, Madam Clerk? And is the council clear with the intent of Councilor Franco's amendment?
No, I think, I think the amendment's very simple, and then the membership is lined up also. Yep.
Okay, I heard a, I heard a no.
That would be Council Parker.
Okay, um, Counselor, Councilor Franco, I'm going to give you the opportunity to speak first, and then we will go to Council Parker.
Okay. So the reason I made this motion is to remove elected officials um, and politics from the committee. And, um, I believe the committee is being formed to allow residents to discuss their issues directly with police and with citizens within that committee. And most citizens should be able to speak freely regarding issues without them being turned into a political discussion. Committee that then can make, um, can then collaborate and send their recommendations off to the town council's public safety committee. Um, I also believe a membership of 11 may be hard to fill, because I mean, there are many boards and commissions where we have a hard time filling them. And then we would have to have a quorum of six, and that may be difficult. And, um, if you're inviting the public out to meet with you and to discuss issues and topics, I believe, you know, a smaller committee would be better. Have ex officio members, and everybody else in the community is welcome to come and discuss issues. But then you would only need three of the members to attend to be able to have a public meeting with a quorum, because I would hate to see that, because, um, a, a public meeting of such, when people wanted to come out and discuss issues with the police, would have to possibly cancel because they couldn't get a quorum. Um, and residents may not understand. And I think the name, um, I think it should be something different than what the city has, and I think this is very easy, can be easily referred to. Um, and people would understand and know what they're talking about, and they say it very quickly with the acronym. Um, but I'm open to hear other opinions, and thank you.
All right, so we are going on to Counselor Parker, and we are speaking to the amendment. Counselor Parker?
Okay. A couple of things. First thing is, you took out the number six whereas. We did not vote on items one and three. We only voted on item two, unless you want to clarify sentence saying that the other two items were, are already in place per HB 6004, which is state law. Number two, I wouldn't call the group cops, because people talk about cops and say cops. So it might be confusing if we're saying cops, as in there were many cops, or cops as in the group. So I don't want the public to be confused if they're talking and they're like, oh yeah, cops did this, and we had this meeting, or cops in the street are this. I'm all for, well, the next third item is, I think the number of non-elected citizens should be increased. It shouldn't be three and two representatives of the police department. I don't think that's enough. If we're gonna do it, make it seven. Because then you can probably get people from each district, if that's gonna be the case. Similar to how we do the RTM and picking people. Just a suggestion, because then we have people from different corners of the town that are well represented. Just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselors Zeperry next. You have the floor, sir?
We've made a change in the, uh, uh, motion that's on the agenda, but we have not indicated, we've simply made the change, oh, we're gonna put back numbers one and number three. But I don't have number one and number three in front of me now. And, and it's very difficult for me to say, okay, we could do that. But I do remember when we discussed this in the, in the Committee of the Whole, that I was concerned, one of my main concerns was that, uh, complaints against police officers would be made public. And I think that, uh, that's wrong. I think that once a complaint has been dealt with and the police department has made a, uh, determination as to what should be done about them, then that can be publicized. But until that time, it's, uh, trying, uh, a police officer in the media. And I don't think that should be done. I don't think we should disgrace a police officer before he's had due process to show that he did act properly under the circumstances in which he was, uh, accused by some irate citizen or someone who is disappointed in, in something about the police department. So I think, I, before we vote on this, I think we should have a full, uh, printing of what numbers one and two are. And I am concerned that any, uh, exposure of, uh, a publication of complaints against any individual police officer, uh, one, I think it might be illegal, because it's a personnel matter, and the personnel records are kept confidential by statute. And two, because it's just plain unfair to publicize complaints against police officers before they've been, uh, processed reasonably by, uh, uh, the department in the way that they do process them. Uh, so that's, that's what I think about that, and I, I, I would, uh, so I would speak, I am speaking against both of the amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilor Bumgardner?
Yes, I think you, Madam Mayor, um, quickly, a, a clarifying question. So Councilor Franco's second amended motion, um, does not restore, um, the original recommendations, number one and three, um, to this motion. Is that correct?
I, I think it does. Councilor Franco, this is your amendment. Can you address that, please?
Yes, it would, in the last whereas, it would say the town council recommends approval of the final Cork report consensus, consensus, consensus. Oh my gosh, what's wrong with me tonight? Consensus recommendation, comma. And then, um, now, and that's where it's, and it's taking one, two, and three, and putting it in as, um, being approved by us. I mean, if you want to send us back to committee and work on it again, you could, but we went through all of this. One, one of- It's not my top, so I'm gonna-
Let me, let me go back. Councilor Bumgardner, you have the floor. Um, is your question answered?
You know, it was my understanding last week that we stripped those provisions, because the council was uncomfortable with them.
That's not, no, no.
Point of order. Policing.
Counselor Franco, what is your point of order?
He cannot tell, he can't say if I felt uncomfortable about something.
I never said uncomfortable. I said it was my understanding, Counselor Franco.
Counselor Franco, your point is taken. Um, one of our things is we don't assign, what is the correct term? It's in our rules. Um, we, we don't question the motives.
I did not question the motives, Ma- Madam Mayor.
We can only, we can only speak to what actually happened, so-
Madam Mayor, I did not question the ma- the motives of any of my fellow counselors. I did not do that, and I would not do that.
What actually happened was they stripped away one and three, and they voted for two. But you have time remaining, sir.
Yes, and that was my understanding, that, that took, that took place. And so I was clarifying if that was the case. My question is, why are we restoring something? And I'm in full support of restoring those items. But my question is, why we as a body vote to, to repeal it and then are now restoring it? What has changed? That we've talked a lot about procedural, you know, we're, we're amending motions and adding new language, but, um, what, why are we a- adding language that this council voted to strip? I'm stating on the record that I voted against doing that. And my question is, why as a council, we're doing that this evening? As we are, had already done that in town.
Yeah, I, I don't want to put words in anyone else's mouth, but I thought I heard Counselor Melendez, and you can correct me, um, Counselor Melendez, if I'm misinterpreted. But I believe you said that the concern was that, um, you recognized that these things are in effect now, which was the thinking of, I, I'm sitting here looking at this, because I watched the meeting after, not as a participant in that meeting. But, um, the council's, um, take on this was those two other items were already in place. Counselor Melendez, I believe, is saying that his concern is that this may not always be the council. And in order to safeguard and make sure that those two things are always there, he was recommending putting them back in as kind of a, as a precaution, um, for the future. Is that, Counselor Melendez, you, you're welcome to correct if that doesn't accurately state your rationale?
That, that was correct. Thank you.
Yes, and, and I'm much com- more comfortable with that change, uh, and would most certainly not support, uh, naming this group cops. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, let's see. So, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a turn. Let me start my little timer thing. Um, I know that there's concern for the size of the group, however, um, I concur with Counselor Parker's comment regarding the number of residents that should be on the committee. I think we need to have more residents. My other concern is that, um, the chief would be a member of the committee, as the chief is the spokesperson and, um, the one responsible for implementing policy. So my concern would be that he was, is being left off of the committee. And I know Mr. Burt, um, would also not be on the committee. And I'm just gonna pause for a second and ask Mr. Burt or the chief to, to speak to having you removed from the committee. And I'll resume.
In terms of myself, I'm the, I have oversight over the police department above, uh, LJ. But really, he's got the police department, I've got above that. And the council does not have a, a supervisory authority over the, the, uh, police. So I think it's imperative that I'm on there along with the, the police chief.
Okay, so, so Mr.-
Any clarification?
One moment, please. Um, so Mr. Burt, you're stating that you would like to be an actual member of the committee, as well as the chief to be a member of the committee?
That'd be my preference.
Rather than ex officio?
No, the chief may have a different idea.
But you're stating that rather than being ex officio, you would like to be a seated member of the committee?
Yes.
Thank you. Chief Fasaro, may I ask you as well, please?
Hey, I concur. I, I think that the police chief and town manager are important members, whether it's an ex officio status or in a regular status, but I think both of us, uh, or our designees should be, uh, representatives in some form or fashion.
Counselor Franco, what was your point of clarification? Councillor Franco, what was your point of clarification?
My amended motion says two police representatives. And I'm sure the police chief would be sending his representatives, if not himself. So that covers that. I was trying to keep out, my intention was to keep out elected officials from making any of this political.
Thank you. All right, so I have, I have some time left. I, I am comfortable with the resolution as written, but including Councillor Melendez's amendment. So I would be accepting of the motion as is, but in the sixth whereas, including the term consensus recommendations. So that's where I am with this. I think the more, in this case, I think the more people, the better. I understand, having come from very large committees on the RTM, that it is sometimes difficult to get a forum. But I think the overarching principle and the goal of this group is to get more people involved. And therefore, I think it would be best to have more residents involved and to have the chief and to have the manager there who can actually give decisive answers to things because they are the ones that understand what's going on with the law. And it's important for them to be a voice in the community and have the community be able to reach to them. So, so I am in favor of the original motion with Councillor Melendez's amendment. Sorry if that was too wordy, guys, but I'm still have a minute left, but I'll shut up. Okay. I have Councillor Bordelone next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of things. I don't know. I think stripping this down and changing the name does no disservice as originally when this court report came forward, we were commending the efforts of all the committee members and all their due diligence and what they had done. Town council did not form this committee. It was set up by the moderator. And for full disclosure, as stated, my husband, Ian Thomas, who's an RTM member, which is like, there's been some criticism on that, which has been very open and transparent. There's a lot of elected official couples that vote on different budgets and different things. There's no money value to this, but because of that, I will say that. And everyone knows that. So it's interesting. The people who are calling it out actually know that. But anyway, the important piece is they did a lot of hard work. And certain people did not even want that group to move forward in its capacity. And even they had some pushback. So to hear people now state that they're wrapping right around it and all of that, we only got here from the work. And I think it's important to appreciate and represent some of our moderator and Ian Thomas, my husband, an RTM member, the court chair. That's the reason we're even talking about this. And I think that's very important. Because even when the community was pushing back and certain elected officials were pushing back, they pushed forward to make this happen. So to change this name to cops, as I sit here and have my son look at that and other folks in the community, one of the reasons that the state has come in the way that it has come to be is to make it more inclusive, to make it more of a community policing. And I think the word cops for some is conceived in a conceptual way. So I align my marks with Councillor Parker with the name could be misused or overheard the wrong way. If you look at some of our towns around us, they're even changing their, their police stations to say safety stations and not police stations. So to make this committee that's supposed to be.
Have one minute.
Thank you for that. Inciting of the whole community to name it cops, I think does the opposite of what the original thought process and the way in which this was being pulled in to be a very inclusive group of folks that feel very comfortable. Let's just say you were a person who had a lot of runnings in with the police. You don't wanna come to a committee meeting that's called cops. Would you? I don't know. I've never had runnings, but I think it's really important. So again, I align my marks with Councillor Melendez. And the reason I voted this motion down at the last meeting is because it, that was the three consensus reports that came forward. And even though the state is already doing two of them, I think it's important on a town level that we own it just in case the state changes its position. So again, I will support the Mayor Granitowski, Councillor Melendez with the current modifications. I think that's the appropriate step forward and I, I think that's appropriate this time. Thank you.
Right. Councillor Franco?
I just heard a lot there and talking about they and them. I don't know who, who's being talked about and who you're referring to. I will say I was on the Public Safety Committee. And the recommendation for all three came from the Safety Committee with a vote of two, two. Councillor Bumgarner and myself approved it. And Councillor Bordelone did not. So if people have issues with the name of it, just leave it up to the group to figure out the name. When they figure out their bylaws, it's not that big of an issue. I will strike that from my amended motion. And replace it with somebody, you know, the committee figuring it out. When it comes to how many people on there and I don't know why we want numerous elected officials on there with the potential of maybe making a lot of it political. I think that should be held out of that committee. I just do not think it's necessary. And I will ask the chief, do you think it would be beneficial to have elected officials on there? Or would it be more beneficial to have just citizens and police on there?
Go ahead. Sorry.
I, I think, I think the number needs to be manageable. I think it needs to be people that, quite frankly, are part of the areas that we police that have an interest in the department making it better, helping us, giving us advice. You know, we, we ultimately, the elected officials in town have a lot of controlling interest over the police department already. It might be an opportunity for others to get involved, as you said, trying to be more inclusive. So, you know, maybe a couple of ex officio parties, as someone had pointed out before, but I think the vast majority of people, again, need to be, what I would characterize as our constituents, people that are in the community that we police that are involved in trying to make the department better, but also to open up lines of communication. And so I, I hope that answers your question, Councillor Franco. I think I tried to address.
Yes, thank you. I personally think politics should stay out of it. Citizens should be comfortable going there and talking. And you know what? If you wanna make it seven, I'm good with seven. I'm fine with seven. I just think eleven is a very large number and trying to get a quorum. Especially I've seen it even with the Athletic Fields Task Force. There's many meetings that they had to cancel because they could not get a quorum. That's why I stepped down and said, go ahead and have less members and I'll be a liaison so that they could have, trying to get their quorums. So I just don't think it's, it's wise to keep politics in this. I think there's some hot button issues in there and the citizens and the police would do just fine dealing with that. And if you want the town manager in there, that's fine, too. But keep the politics out of it. Keep the elected officials out of it. Because I have seen on way too many occasions, people make things political when they don't need to. And I just don't think this should be. Thank you.
We're gonna go to first time speakers next. So Councillor Heed, you haven't spoken yet on any of these items, so you have the floor. Councillor Heed, you have the floor.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute myself. I was just saying, I think, you know, to put this in the number of like seven or eight, seven to nine people probably is, is good, but I, I don't necessarily think that a councillor or an elected official should be a full member. Then again, we do have them on beautification committee. We have councillors on other committees. But generally speaking, when you're an elected official, you shouldn't be on another committee. And, you know, it's great to have the official position that you're, you're in something. But we can all attend any of these meetings. And, and I think that it should be maybe a little bit like the seven is probably a great number. Not defined it by RTM districts, but just say seven members. And as far as the name, I don't really, I, I understand the, the opposition to the idea of cops. I, I kind of thought cops was an interesting idea, which is why I thought, why not support it? But I, I hear what's being said. And so I think that it shouldn't be called cops. Something like that maybe, but not, not that. So that, that's all.
Looking at my list to see who I have in order. Councillor Melendez, I had your name here and I skipped over you before I apologized. Did you wish to speak again?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, good. Let me take you off the list. So then we have Bordelone, Bumgarner, Parker. And I lost track of which amendment we were speaking on and what time we started speaking on that amendment.
We're on amendment two and everybody who has their hand up, that's already talked about on two.
Twice or twice? They've already talked.
Just once, just once.
Once? Well, I have, I have people, I have Melendez didn't speak. I have Franco twice. And I have, this will be.
Yes, she doesn't have her hand up, though.
No, I know, I know, Madam Clerk. I'm trying to clarify where the Second Amendment discussion started. Now, that sounds bad, Second Amendment. You know what I mean? So I have Bordelone twice, I have Bumgarner twice and Parker twice. And this is all the second time on the Second Amendment, I believe. So we are going to Councillor Bordelone right now and it is nine sixteen. You have the floor.
Thank you. I think it is important to see if we're gonna hold all committees and other, you know, things to not have any elected officials on it, then that should be something that we look at as a whole. But we shouldn't make it, you know, germane to just this particular committee only. So if we wanna take elected officials out of all of our committees, then that's something, that's a further discussion. But I do think it is important to look at what is a feasible number. But I also think it's important to make sure that there's proper representation and allowing for full discussion to happen. So if eleven is the number, I think that is appropriate. As far as, you know, you know, with, with way Councillor Franco stated that I did not vote for this out of the committee. I did not vote for it out of the committee because we were tasked with the fact of creating an ordinance. And we took only the recommendations from the Court Committee, which were the three recommendations. And I thought that we were gonna add something else in there, but the only thing we could agree on was the court recommendation. So that's what went forward. But that doesn't change the fact that I, I, I still stand with it as a minimal first step in the big picture process. So again, I think it is important to look at it as a whole. If we think we need more time on this, I think we send it back to the committee and we work out the fine details. But I, I would hate to rush the process. And I think it is important to, to make sure that we understand exactly what we're agreeing to and how we're getting there. But again, the Court Committee did the most work, wrote the report, and it was a far representation. So I think taking their three items and at least moving those forward. And if we wanted to revisit it as a council later and make any amendments or anything like that, I could see that fit at a later time. But at this time, since we did not do the full work of this, I think we should move what they have forward. And I will stand with the, the amended motion of Councillor Melendez.
So what I would like to do, I'm going to give the floor to Councillor Parker and Obray. And then I'm gonna ask for consensus on whether you'd like to send this back or not to committee. So, Councillor Parker, you have the floor. Councillor Parker, did you wish to speak?
I do. Sorry, I thought I unmuted.
That's okay. You have the floor.
We're putting back in one and three is on top of what we had for two. Is that correct?
I believe that is what both Councillor Melendez and Franco intended, but they can correct me as they are the maker of the motions. Councillor Melendez and Franco, do you both desire to put all three consensus recommendations in your amended motions?
That is correct.
Councillor Franco?
Yes.
Okay, Councillor Parker, is that clear?
Thank you. Councillor Parker, as when Councillor Zupiri brought forth this amendment, I agree with his amendment of taking out one and three because I understand where everybody's coming from. But the civilian complaints has been out there for years from the state. That is not gonna, I don't believe will change unless a whole new group of people decide to take that out. This has been going on for civilian complaints for years. And if I can ask Chief Fisaro that, if I'm remembering correctly, if that's okay, Madam Mayor.
Yes. Chief, can you answer the question, please?
Well, the complaint policy that was promulgated by post, I believe, was in twenty fifteen, if I'm not mistaken. So yes, the, the whole policy that we have to adhere to was a post requirement. It's been, you can read about it. It's been in the London Day a couple of times. They did audits of it. There was articles written on it. But yes, that, that is accurate, Councillor Parker. It has been a requirement for police departments to adhere to for at least four years, if not longer.
That's what I thought. And I understand number three is the other issue, but most of this is per state policy. And I believe this is gonna probably go around to other states. Don't quote me on that. But every, after everything has happened, everybody's looking at police differently. And they want more things in effect. Body cameras, footage, everything that could happen has, has been happening in a step process. So to add those two back in is just unconvoluted unless they go and say, we say per state statute. And like I said, I agree with the number seven, but I will yield the floor. Thank you.
I would like to strike my motion and amend, put a new amended motion on the floor.
I would like to let Councillor Obray speak before we go anywhere else with that, please. Councillor Obray, you have the floor. You're muted, Councillor Obray.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. Should've left me muted. I, I would, I would suggest, and I'd like to make the motion, that we send this to the Public Safety Commission. They can invite the RTM group. And there should be discussion, again, taking into consideration the concerns that have been put on the floor tonight. And then come back so that we, right at this point, I'm not even sure what we would be voting on. So I, I don't think it would be appropriate to go forward with a vote. Some of you are much sharper than I, so you're probably right on point with it, but I'm not. So could we please consider sending it to the Public Safety Committee to ask the RTM Committee to join with the Public Safety Committee of the council? Take our recommendations into consideration, rewrite and come back. And that would be my hope. And that's what I would move.
Thank you, Councillor Obray. So right now, I'm, I'm gonna ask if, I, I feel that because of so much discussion going on, this should probably go back to committee. But that's something that we as a body need to decide. So I would make a motion to spend twenty twenty-one six one-two RTM Civilian Oversight Research Committee report back to, we can send it to committee of the whole. That way we can all have dibs on it, or we could send it to public safety, but I think it needs to go back to committee. Is there a second to send it back to committee? Okay.
As much as I hate to interrupt you, we can't have two amended motions on the floor.
That would be the third one.
No, this isn't an amendment. This is, I'm just referring it back to committee. So I'm not amending the motion at all. I'm, and I could look it up, but Madam Clerk, are you there?
Yeah, you're absolutely in the right. You can, anybody could refer this right back to the committee. Not anybody. Don't you have to be on the prevailing side?
I need a second, please.
Don't you need to be on the prevailing side?
No, 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 that would be a vote.
We're not reconsidering. We're referring it back to committee. Who, who seconded?
Second.
Thank you. So the motion to refer twenty twenty-one six one-two RTM Civilian Oversight Research Committee back to committee, moved by Granitowski, seconded by Obray. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Bumgarner? Any other opposed?
Melendez.
Parker? Franco? Any extensions?
Did you have?
I'm sorry?
Did you get O'Bree, I'm sorry.
No, that's, I just wanted to talk again, sorry. I'll take it down.
There are five in favor, four opposed, Bumgardner, Melendez, Parker and Franco and zero abstentions. So that is sent back to committee. And we can send it to, I think we should send it back to committee of the whole. Probably would be best that way, we could all have discussion on that. All right, very good. So that's going, that's going back to committee. And I would ask everybody to kind of get your thoughts together. And we will let you know, the manager and I will take a look at where we are with other agenda items that need to come forward. And we'll figure out when we could get it onto the agenda.
Can I ask a question?
One second, please.
Sure. Oh, right now.
Okay. I see two hands, so I don't know who was first. I heard Counselor O'Bree's voice, I wasn't looking, so I don't know whoever wants to go first.
No problem, let Rachel go.
Okay.
Great to say what I was going to say.
Recession, no. Go ahead.
I just wanted to bring up that, to send it back to committee. I was told when I had tried to bring back something to committee, I was not on the prevailing side of the vote. So I was not allowed to send something back.
That's.
I just want to make that clear, that I try, I simply tried to put something back to committee in the past, but I wasn't on the prevailing side of the vote. And I was told by Counselor Melendez, it was backed up by other people, that I was not able to do that. So I just wanted to make sure that the, the motion is clear of that we are doing this properly.
We're not reconsidering it, we're referring it back.
I did the same exact thing, I wanted to send something back to committee. And I was told I was not allowed to because I was not on the prevailing side.
Okay. Counselor O'Bree, what, what was your comment?
I, I just want, Counselor Franco, you're on the committee, aren't you?
I am.
Okay, because I'm hoping what you were about to say could be part of the conversation when you do meet. Because I, I take, I know you've put time and effort into this. So I would really hope that the committee would grant you that opportunity. That's all, thank you.
I believe this is going back to Cal.
Point of clarification, I'm confused by Counselor O'Bree's response.
I'm, I'm not sure, but the, this item is back to committee. So we're having no further discussion on it at this point.
Point of clarification, I just want to make sure that it's based on what Counselor O'Bree stated. It's not going back to the Safety Committee, correct?
Going back to Cal.
Well, yeah, it's not going, okay, just want to make sure, thank you.
All right, so now we are on to twenty twenty-one eighty-eight-two Mystic Education Center redevelopment. I'm going to give you one second to get my papers where they need to be. This is page twenty-nine in your packet. And I'm going to ask Mr. Burt if he would like to introduce this, or if he would like Mr. Reiner to introduce this.
Mr. Reiner's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner, thank you for joining us again.
You're welcome, sorry, just took me a second to unmute that there. So we were going to go into executive session tonight. I believe Attorney Cody and Attorney Callahan are both here, joining us to talk about how we can move forward with our options for the Mystic Education Center redevelopment project as it relates to the development agreement and the letters that have gone back and forth between the attorneys.
Sorry. Mr. Burt, did you want to add anything else?
No, that's fine.
Okay, so I have a motion that you provided. Counselor Franco, before I make a motion, did you want to say something?
I wanted to speak to the motion.
Okay, there's no motion yet, so. All right, so I hereby move that the members of the Town Council, Town Manager John Burt, Planning Director John Reiner, Assistant Planning Director Deb Jones, Economic Development Manager Paige Bronk, Attorney Rich Cody and Attorney Eric Callahan, go into executive session pursuant to General Statute Section one two hundred six B to discuss strategy and nego- negotiations with respect to pending claims or pending litigation pertaining to the Mystic Education Center. I so move. Moved by Granatowski and seconded by Franco. Mr. Burt, just verify that that was the correct motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Franco, you wish to speak to this motion?
Yes, I just want to clarify that the information that we're going into executive session for is actual executive session information that cannot be discussed publicly. And if there are any issues or items that come up during the discussions in executive session that can be released publicly, will we please do so? John Burt.
Yes, I mean, yeah, it's good with me.
Thank you.
Counselor Heed, discussion on the motion to go into executive session.
Yeah, I just, I want to ask for just a statement from the town attorney or, or, you know, the town manager. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm assuming that, you know, that I hear that the people who live in the area of the Mystic Oral School would like us to have this in public. Can you please explain the rationale of why we need to, or why we should go into executive session? Or is there any portion of this that can be discussed outside of executive session?
Let me just say before they answer, I did not write the motion, the motion came from the attorney, so. But we would, I'm not sure if this is Mr. Cody or Mr. Callahan that would like to take that response, please?
I'm happy to answer it, Rich Cody, for the record. The, the contract right now is, has a provision in it that provides for a dispute resolution. And they have, the resport team has triggered that in its last letter. So the, the fact that we are in a dispute resolution, sort of what would be considered to be a mediation, is pending litigation within the meaning of the FOI.
Counselor Heed, does that answer your question?
Like I said, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know what he just said. I haven't, I don't know what he said.
Okay, the, the contract has in it a, what's a standard provision that you find in contracts when, when parties are trying to arrange in a contract, what happens when there's dispute? And it's sort of like a cooldown period, which is essentially a mediation. And a mediation is an informal method by which the parties are required to get together by the contract to resolve disputes. It is litigation within the meaning of the statute. So the, the idea of keeping it private is to keep it, keep the strategies and negotiations within its close circle and not to air it out in the public. That is why the statute, the Freedom of Information Act is written to exclude or we give you the opportunity to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Okay, understood, thank you.
All right, seeing no other hands, we will vote on the motion to go into executive session as per the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Borlon? Any abstentions?
And, and Bumgardner, no.
I'm sorry, one more time?
I said no.
Bumgardner is opposed? Any abstentions? So we have seven in favor, opposed Borlon and Bumgardner and zero abstentions. So that motion to go into executive session passes. Thank you very much. Mr. Greeley and Mr. Burt, we are going to be going into executive session. We will need you back, Mr. Greeley. I'm not sure who's going to take care of this. Do you need a break again, people? Five-minute break while we're taking care of everything as far as stopping the recording.
Yes, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. Burt, what?
I was going to make sure, everyone knows if you're not part of the executive session, that you have to leave the session. You have to remove yourself from the Zoom link until the executive session's over.
Okay, so we have thirteen. We are out of executive session. It, we came out at ten twenty-four, we've got the recording up and running. And we are on to item twenty twenty-one six three three, Discussion of Employees' Employment and/or Pending Claim Litigation Regarding Employment. This is page thirty in your packet. I hereby move that the Town Council suspend Council Rule seven C to allow for executive session and potential discussion regarding an employment issue prior to approval and recommendation by the Committee of the Whole. I so move.
Second, Parker.
Moved by Granatowski and seconded by Parker. We need two-thirds to suspend the rules, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Rules are suspended, that's unanimous. Counselor, I can just read the next one too. I hereby move that the Town Council, along with Town Manager John Burt and Town Attorney Eileen Duggan, go into executive session pursuant to General Statutes one two hundred six A and/or B regarding discussion of an employee's employment and/or a claim litigation regarding a pending employment matter. I so move.
Second, Parker.
Moved by Granatowski and seconded by Parker. All those in favor of the executive session motion as read, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, so that was unanimous to go into executive session as per the motion. It is now ten twenty-nine. And we need to take care of reporting again. And we need to take care of reporting again. 24 PM. And I am going to read a resolution authorizing the town manager to execute severance documents. I'm assuming that's a typo, Mr. Burt, to execute severance documents?
Yes.
Whereas the town and a non-union employee have reached an amicable agreement to resolve the employee's employment, including any potential claims by employee, now therefore be it resolved that the town manager is authorized to execute the documents necessary to finalize the severance agreement reached between the town and the aforementioned non-union employee. I so move.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Granatowski, seconded by Franco. Seeing no discussion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, would it be at all possible if we could post the resolution in the chat box?
Mr. Burt, do you have that available?
If you give me a minute, I can come up with it.
Yes. Counselor Bordelon, did you have a remark while Mr. Burt is posting the resolution?
Yeah, I guess out here, what can we talk about?
Nothing.
That's, that's, we were going to yield to our attorney's opinion on this. So I will yield to Attorney Duggan.
Yes, I would certainly recommend that there be no further discussion of it. Certainly is with all, with all of these types of resolutions, the idea in part is that there will be limitations of speech or discussion by either party. And in this instance, the employee would have the right to go through the town manager to obtain information related to his employment for purposes of, for example, future employers. But beyond that, there's really not a, not a recommendation that the town comment on it.
It is out there now.
Okay, so we will take Attorney Duggan's advice. And the, Mr. Burt has posted the resolution in writing for everyone to read. And we will vote on this particular resolution authorizing the manager to execute severance documents. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. Bumgardner?
Any abstentions?
Bordelon abstained.
Seven in favor, one opposed Bumgardner, one abstention Bordelon. That motion passes. Counselors, we are at 11:29, so we are beyond the time when we normally would stop. So at this point, I need to ask if there's consensus to take up any more work. If not, people can move to adjourn. So.
Okay.
Move to adjourn by Parker. Second, Zepari. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously, we were adjourned at 11:29 PM.
Good night, John Boy.
Good night, everyone. Thank you. Be well. Wear your mask, social distance, get vaccinated.